Good morning, the time is now 9:37 a.m. And a quorum of the Board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of January 9th, 2018 is called to order. The co-presidents of the State Board of Education will chair this meeting in the absence of Superintendent Brian Wiston. I'm co-president Richard Ziley, and I will be chairing the morning portion of the meeting. Co-president Cassandra Albridge will chair the afternoon portion of the meeting. Before we go into items, Cassandra, you have a special notice of concern to all of us here.
I do. This is the second meeting, as many of you know that Brian has not been able to attend with us. And I'm sorry to report that the reason that he has not been at the meeting and cannot be at the meeting today is that he's undergoing radiation treatments for a recent cancer diagnosis. But I want to assure you that he is in daily contact with the Michigan Department of Education, and comes into the office when he can. And we are all optimistic that his treatments will be successful, and he'll keep moving us forward in our goal to become a top-10 and 10 state in the state of Michigan. So please join me in our thoughts and prayers for Brian and his family at this difficult time, and our continued support and hope that he makes a full recovery.
Thank you very much. Those of you who've been around remember our previous superintendent, deeply respected, Michael Flanagan also had cancer and was able to beat it and continue service with the Board, and so we are optimistic going forward. All right. The first item on the agenda is the approval of Agenda and Order of Priority.
Motion to approve.
Okay, well, are there any...
I understand there is a family we want to...
Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda? And it has been recommended to me that Item K, Approval of the Model Code of Student Conduct, be removed. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Agenda and Order of Priority as amended.
I'll move that.
Support.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
I have questions.
Questions.
Why is that being removed, please?
At the recommendation of the Deputy Superintendent Kyle Garant. The motion carries. There is an informational folder item, information on the Michigan test for teacher certification, the three-year cumulative report for 2014, 2017. No action is required on our part, but it looks like a good, thick document that we can examine and digest. All right. At this time, Marilyn will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Yes, you have just heard from co-president Richard Ziley, who resides in Dearborn. Next to him, Cassandra Albridge, Board's co-president, resides in Rochester Hills. Next to her, the Board's secretaries, Michelle Fecto residing in Detroit. Nikki Snyder is the Board's NASB delegate. It's their association, National Association of State Boards of Education. She resides in Dexter. Next to her is this year's Teacher of the Year, Luke Wilcox. When he's not with us, he's a high school math teacher at Kentwood High School and Kentwood Public Schools. Across the table, representing the Governor's Office, is Tyler Sawyer. He's Senior Strategy Advisor for Education and Career Connections. Next to him, Board Member Eileen Weiser from Ann Arbor. And then, as we go around the table, Lupe Ramos Montini. She's Board Member from Grand Rapids. Pamela Pugh, Board Member from Saginaw. And next to me, the Board's Treasurer, Tom McMillan from Oakland Township. I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive.
Thank you. Let's see, it's Susan, will you begin the... Is she here?
Yep.
Yes, of course. Would you introduce new employees of Michigan Department of Education?
Certainly. I'd like to introduce Heather Shepherd. Would you talk a little bit about your job in Child Development and Care?
Sure. I'm a departmental supervisor in Child and Development here. We work with enrolling the unlicensed childcare providers and work with the billing of those providers and licensed providers with that as well. Just a little bit about myself, I have came to the Department of Education with 20 years of state service from the Department of Treasury. So it's a big change, and the month that I've been here, it has been wonderful. It's been a nice opportunity to learn something new, so thank you.
Vanessa?
Good morning. We have two new employees in my division. We'll start with Don Carmody from Office of Field Services.
Hello, my name's Don Carmody. I'm Office of Field Services, Special Populations. I am Title I Part D and 31A, so Neglect, Delinquent, and at-Risk Consultant. In the last month, as Heather said, I've loved meeting my new colleagues, diving in to help our at-risk students across the state. I come to the State Department with 13 and 1/2 years of teaching in Chuywase County, mostly my at-risk students at the elementary level.
Thanks, Don. And we also have Jeff McNeil from Office of Education Improvement and Innovation.
Hello, I'm Jeff McNeil. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
My job over in Office of Improvement and Innovation is, right now I'm doing the 21J Grant, the 99s, so I'm involved with those. I oversee some of the grants there. The, let's see, AP Grant, and I come from the field for the last 20 years where I've done alternative ed, high school, middle school, adult ed, and a little before and after-school program.
Kyle?
Good morning. I have three new employees in my division. First, I'll start with Mike Diebel, Office of Health and Nutrition Services.
Morning, my name is Mark Diebel. I'm a member of the FAST team, the Fiscal and Administrative. Our team provides financial audits, procurement audits for school visits so that participate in the school management program. I've been in state government just shy of three years. Prior to that, transferring DE, I came from Project Sigma.
Timothy Gleiser from the Library of Michigan.
Morning, my name's Tim Gleiser. I'm Head of Special Collections at the Library of Michigan and all the public services staff at the Library of Michigan. Before coming here, I was at the city of Grand Rapids for 12 years as the Head of Special Collections for the Grand Rapids Public Library and the Historical...
Lastly, Jennifer Sisoda from the Library of Michigan as well.
Good morning, I'm Jennifer. I'm a Library of Michigan. I am currently working with government documents. I appear and maintain... Or here, I have a...
Marty?
Hi. We needed to refill an existing position as Legislative Analyst. We have some extraordinary applicants, and we selected Stephen DeGrove.
Hi, I'm Stephen DeGrove. I'm the new Legislative Analyst with the Office of Policy and Government Affairs. I come here from, I'm coming back home to Michigan from North Carolina, just in time for the Arctic blast. So it's been a great adjustment, working with Carolina and Marty, and I'm excited to be part of the team.
Wendy, I understand you have someone?
Yes, I do, thank you. I'd like to introduce Teresa Terry Nugent, who is our new Equitable Services...
Yes, good morning, everyone. According to ESA, my position has been appointed as one of us in 50 states, so it's been interesting to build something, a brand-new position from scratch. And we've done that nationally with associates throughout the country, as well as working within the state. So although I started September 25th, this was the first time I was here during the Boardman since I'd been in the field for all this time, trying to build support and some understanding. Prior to this, I come from the Diocese of Calhoun Zoo as the Associate Superintendent. I've been both for 30 years in public and private school as teacher and administrator, as well as the Department of Education in Massachusetts. Excited to be here, thank you.
Have we missed any new employees? Not welcome to our new... Now, we ask that audience members please introduce themselves, and Marty, we always call on you first, I guess, because you're a professional.
I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director in the Office of Public and Government Affairs here at the Department of Education.
I'm Caroline Lethen. I'm a Legislative Liaisoner for the Department of Education.
Stacy Bogeyer with the Michigan Association of School Boards.
David Michelson, Michigan Education Association.
Bob Wright, I'm a limited license psychologist.
Karen Slumber, Superintendent for Capital Intermediate School District.
I'm Lake Arm, Superintendent for Public Schools.
I'm Zeke Perez Jr., I'm a Policy Researcher with the Education...
Good morning, Special Education...
Good morning, I'm Melissa Dalton. I teach at Scripps Middle School, La Boyan Community Schools.
Good morning, I'm Irma Torres. I'm with the Oakley School.
I'm Emily Spinelli.
I'm the Executive Director of the Education...
Good morning, Paul Doyle. Been doing work in the K-12 school system for stills for the last year and a half, currently doing some work with Randalls State University. Interested in the field of bi-literacy, and particularly in badging and micro-traditional and the significance that will have on...
Paula Daniels, and I'm the Interim Director for the Office of Public Schools.
Jacob Cansler, Reporter for MERS News.
News Facilitator for Michigan Special Education Advisory Committee.
I'm Shelley, Special Assistant to Vanessa Kiesler.
Mark Howell, Chief of Staff to the Chief Deputy Superintendent.
Morning, Kyle Garant, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educated Student and School Sports.
Susan Berman, Deputy Superintendent, Chief of 20...
Alyssa Anshur, Very Special Assistant to...
Good morning, Wendy Larvik, Chief of Staff to the State Superintendent, Brian.
Okay. Thank you all, thanks for spending some time with us today. If you plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Do you have one of those forms handy that we can waive it?
Yep.
Yes, that's what the form looks like. Forms are available on the table just outside the boardroom. They must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. That will begin immediately following lunch break scheduled for approximately 1:00 p.m. today. Please be here at that time to make sure that you have opportunity to comment. All right. The first item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation by the Education Commission of the States. This presentation focuses on resources available from the Education Commission of the States, and we welcome Sarah Shelton, Director of State Relations, who will walk us through the presentation. I'll observe that Eileen Weiser is a Commissioner. Eileen, do you have anything to add?
I'm delighted to see Sarah here, and I'm hoping that this is my presentation on ECS for the day.
Very good.
I delegated this to you.
Good morning. Well, thank you for having me here. I'm Sarah Shelton, and I'm privileged to be the Director of State Relations for Education Commission of the States, which gives me the opportunity to help coordinate outreach to all of our ECS Commissioners and key policymakers in the states. I also have the good fortune of being the point person for Michigan, so any questions you might have or requests, please send my way, and I'm happy to engage our policy staff as it makes sense. I was here yesterday talking to the department's leadership team, and I had mentioned, you know, we're headquartered in Denver, and my husband and I are big skiers, and a couple weeks ago, he said, "Michigan has more snow than we do." And I said, "Not true." And then when I landed on Sunday and looked out the window, and yesterday morning there was a blanket of snow, I texted him, and I said, "You are right. There is more snow in Michigan." So I know you guys are experiencing some balmy weather here, so I'm hoping that your snow and cold weather makes it way out west so we can ski for the rest of the season. So I'm going to give you just a little overview about ECS, of who we are, what we do, and how we do it, and then talk about some ways that perhaps we can help support the work that you guys are doing here at the State Board. So who are we? Well, at ECS, we really serve as partners to state policymakers, and we serve education leaders across the state, including legislatures, governors' offices, and Departments of Education, Departments of Higher Education, and of course, state school board members. And we do that in all 50 states and territories. And we're nonpartisan, and we do not advocate. Well, at ECS, we really believe in this power of learning from experience, and we have the privilege every day to work with policymakers like you guys to provide unbiased advice and opportunities for collaboration. And we really do this because we know that informed policymakers create better education policy. And how do we do this? Well, we bucket our work into four areas: research, report, counsel, and convene. And to support all of you in Denver, we have a staff of about 50 people who work just on education policy, and we cover the full range of education policy issues, from early learning all the way through post-secondary in the workforce. So we have really smart, talented staff, and my colleague Zeke Perez is with me today. He's one of our researchers, who read research reports, who repurpose them, who follow legislation on a daily basis to make sure that we're up to speed with what's happening in the states, and then we can share that knowledge across states. So our research bucket, our policy staff review the latest research, they read the 100, 200-page research reports, and they summarize those into concise implications and recommendations for all of you as policymakers. As a national organization, one of our signature deliverables is, we do a lot of 50-state databases and comparisons of how does Michigan look compared to other states, not only in your region, but across the country. And so we compile these snapshots that often are helpful as you're looking at policies and thinking about making changes in your states and wondering what other states are doing. So we have a number of updated policy databases, and a couple that I wanted to mention that might be relevant to the work that you guys are doing here in Michigan. We have one updated on teacher licensure, one on vouchers, state summative assessments, high school feedback reports. We just came out with a 50-state database on K-12 governance structures, which I know is something that you guys have been talking about here. And then also accountability systems, which I think can be helpful to the work that you guys are doing here. We have a number of 50-state comparisons that are coming out in 2018, and on the back table actually provided a handout of reports by quarter that are coming out, so you just have an idea of what's coming up of our shop. But we'll have one on charter school policies that might be of interest to all of you, and then open enrollment. We also have a database on concurrent dual enrollment that we created in 2016, which includes some areas around funding and CTE, and then an update to that in the fall, which again, I think is another resource that can be helpful to the work that you guys are doing here. I was talking to Tyler earlier today, who also serves as one of our Commissioners for ECS as a governor. And one other thing that we do that's helpful in the field is that we have a database of Governor's State-of-the-State Addresses, where we recap the education proposals from Governors across the country and put them in a database. So sometimes it's helpful to see not only what your own Governor has done, but Governors in other states. So I know Governor Schneider is giving his address on the 23rd, so we will work to recap his education proposals and put them in our database. One other signature service that ECS offers, and I know a number of you in here have requested information from us, is that we do these personalized information requests, that when you have a question, even a nuanced question about school funding, or school funding formulas, or dual enrollment, or career pathways, CTE, anything in the post-secondary space, is you can call me or shoot me an email, and our staff is able to kind of stop what they're doing and focus on your question, and do some research of what does the research say, what other state's doing, what are some key considerations as policymakers that you need to know about any of these issues? And typically, we're able to turn these around at about 24 to 48 hours, and a little longer if it's a deeper dive. So last year, we answered about 650 information requests for policymakers across the country, so just gives you an idea of the capacity and the expertise that we have in our office to be able to turn these around, which is exciting. So I hope that you will reach out to us when you have questions. Again, we really see ourselves as your policy staff, knowing that you have limited capacity and time, and we have the opportunity to do some of that research for you. On our website, we actually have a chat function, so if you are on the floor or in a meeting and have a question about a policy, you can jump on our website and type in your question, and we have staff who man this in Denver and who respond within a minute or two of your question. So again, hopefully we can be a good resource for you guys, as you're doing the great work that you're tasked to as the State Board. Another resource that we have, and Todd and I were talking about this earlier this morning, is that we have this new interactive database of bill tracking, which I think can be helpful to your work. This database actually goes back 20 years, 21 years, to 1996, so if you're looking for trends or historical data, this can be helpful for you. You can search by state, you can search by issuing area, by sub-issuing area. Our policy staff actually writes the bill summary, so they walk through the bill and rewrite that in language that makes sense to everybody. So I encourage you to get on our website and to explore this. Our policy staff are looking at legislation on a daily basis, and this is updated weekly, again with enacted legislation and vetoed bills, so a great resource for you as you're looking at legislation and wondering what other states are doing. We also issue a number of reports. Last year, we issued 37 reports, again on the full range of education policies from early childhood all the way through post-secondary in the workforce. And it's through conversations like this that we have with you, with our Commissioners, with other policymakers, that really inform the issues that we focus on for the year. We have a pretty sophisticated analytics where we go through our bill tracking and hits from our website, and what we're seeing in states, to make sure that we're focusing on the reports that matter most to all of you. So I encourage you to check them out. A couple of reports that I think might be helpful to you guys is, we did a little one-pager on charter school authorizers of who they are and the role that they play that might be of interest. We released a report last year on this K-3 space of thinking about, not only is early learning important, but when young people, when students get into kindergarten through third grade, of making sure that they have robust education in terms of qualified teachers and good curriculum, and that there's not a fade-out after they've had a high-quality early learning experience once they get into elementary school. So that might be of interest. As I mentioned, we have this governance database that kind of walks through different governance models in different states that might be helpful as you guys continue the conversation around that this next year. And then teacher licensure, again, a new bit database and a kind of a companion report on that that can be helpful. So as I mentioned, we follow legislation on a daily basis. We're in the states talking to policymakers, so our expertise with our 50 staff in Denver is pretty significant. So here to serve you, and our reports, I think, reflect that. So we also provide counsel. So we provide unbiased advice on policy plans, we consult on proposed legislation, and we also testify at legislative hearings as kind of third-party experts for the national perspective. And last year, we provided sort of this counsel opportunity to 41 states in DC. And what this looks like is, it looks like presentations in states. And the State Board in Washington DC had created a Graduation Requirements Task Force this past year, and they asked us to come out and talk about what we're seeing nationally around graduation requirements and some key consideration for policymakers. So we were out there. The Board of Education in Idaho had asked us to come out and talk about accountability, that they've been looking at their accountability systems and wanting to know what does the research say, and what are some states doing, if we could offer some expertise around that, which we did. And Iowa this year, their Department of Education created a STEM Task Force and asked our STEM expert to come out, again, talking about what we're seeing in other states, some innovative ideas, and start to think about and shape what they're going to do around STEM education in Iowa, since it's one of their priorities. As I mentioned, we also provide testimony. We were in 14 states last year talking about dual enrollment, school financial aid, school funding formulas, ESA plan analysis. We did that for a number of states of looking at their ESA plan and comparing that to plans that we're seeing in other states. And then we provide technical assistance, where we come into a state and either do a deep dive on an information request, or bring other people together to learn from one another. And I think a good case in point is in Indiana, that they came to one of our meetings and had a couple of questions about graduated pathways, which is something that they've been working on. And it evolved to a couple information requests that they had for us, and then evolved to a presentation that we were able to provide at a legislative hearing of what we're seeing in other states and what their research says. And then it turned into a memo of how does the graduated pathways plan or recommendations in Indiana compare to other states? And their State Board, a couple weeks ago, just passed their graduated pathways recommendations, so it was exciting for ECS to be able to be informational and provide opportunities for them to understand what other states were doing as they shaped their recommendations. And then we do a lot of bringing states together around issues of, we were in Oregon last year, and they had asked us to talk about transfer and articulation policy, and then they said, "Oh, by the way, we know our colleagues in Washington are doing really great work. Do you think you could bring them down, that we could learn from one another and kind of give us an overview of what they're doing, and then give us some time for some planning and facilitated discussion?" So we're happy to do those opportunities, where we bring other states that are working on similar issues to you together to kind of learn from one another and help plan. And then, of course, we do state relations visits. We were in 38 states last year, talking to folks like you, policymakers, that are in the trenches, doing this great work. And again, this really informs our work and what we publish and put out from our office. And then lastly, we really believe in this convening of bringing education leaders like yourselves together to learn from one another, not only within states, but across states. So we have two major meetings a year. Our national forum, which is always held at the end of June, we had about 600 attendees at our meeting last year, and ECS Commissioners from 42 states were present. And then we also have a smaller winter Commissioners Meeting at the end of November, where we bring Commissioners together to learn from experts and others in the field. We also do a number of additional meetings, where we have thinkers' meetings, where we bring experts into the field and policymakers to kind of help this big-picture thinking. Eileen actually participated in one of our SS Think-It meetings last December, thinking about process and vision for the state, and the who, what, and why, kind of around ESA, where we released a paper. We've done a number of dual enrollment academies this year, where we bring policymakers together in different states originally to learn from one another and be able to share ideas. So thinking about how you can engage, how we can engage with you, we have a couple newsletters that go out. We have an Eclipse, which is a daily news feed of the top education issues we're seeing across the states. We also have a bi-weekly newsletter that includes some reports that are coming out from us, kind of where we are in the states when we're providing technical assistance or state visits. So I encourage you to, you can subscribe on our website, or you can shoot me an email, and I'd be happy to add you to that. So before I leave you, I would just love for you to think about, when you're doing research, or when you're looking for reports, to think about ECS and how we can support your work. When you need counsel, when you're looking for advice on policy plans, or wondering what other states are doing, or would like a presentation here at a board meeting, or testimony at a legislature from a third-party expert, I hope you consider ECS. And then your own professional development. At our meetings, both within states and at our national meeting around professional development, if you're interested in wondering what other states are doing, what the research says, national experts to come and attend and be part of those meetings. And our national forum this year will be June 27 through the 29th in Washington DC, and it's just a great opportunity to connect with folks across states and across the aisles. So I hope you consider ECS as a partner to your work that you're doing here at the State Board, and appreciate the opportunity to be here and learn more about your priorities at the State Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Eileen?
Thank you, Sarah. I would like to add that ECS is impeccable, and it's... I would like to add that ECS is impeccable, and it's, I wouldn't call it detachment, because they're very passionate, but they have no axe to grind in this situation. They're brokering information from one state to the next and from policymakers who are looking for examples of things that do and don't work. One of the things that, Sarah, I'm going to put you on the spot for a minute, because I have called and offered, asked for information, and they have been fantastic at referring me to people who have, I wouldn't call it arcane research, but unknown research, that is important for the kinds of things that we're doing. They're just fabulous at identifying resources. But one of the questions that keeps on coming up on this board is whether or not anybody in any other state is working on student data privacy. And the reason for that is that we find ourselves in a technologically expanding world that has things like schools on the, school districts on the East Coast being hacked for blackmail, for threats of locking down their data systems, not necessarily for student privacy. But, you know, we recognize that there's a new world coming at us that nobody's really quite prepared for. FERPA, on a federal basis, provides a ton of protection in legislation, but it also keeps researchers from being able to help schools. We did an autism study about seven or eight years ago here in this state, and found that nobody could identify legally the parents of the children who are getting services, so that we could ask the parents whether that actually worked for their child. So there's going to be a new emerging set of questions on this. Ford Motor Company is doing research on whether they can allow the drivers of their cars to control the data that the car collects, so that they can decide whether to sell it or not. And I wonder whether anybody is out in front on this issue, or whether anybody's even considering that it might be of importance to do a research.
Sure. So we have gotten a number of questions, and I think policymakers are concerned about data privacy and what that looks like in states. So I can pull together some information and send to you. We don't have a specific paper on it, a report, but it's one of those questions that, you know, come out of meetings of, what are other states doing? What should we consider? That we can go back and work on for you and send back to you. So I will take that back to our team and let you know what they find and report back.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, did you have a question?
Well, it was actually on student privacy.
Well, how about that?
But I guess I was more at the, not just making sure that it doesn't get hacked or anything, but also just the appropriateness of the state knowing, you know, I mean, I guess, when I was in the legislature, I proposed that parents should be able to say, no, you're not going to collect data on my child. Is there any, any states or has your, shown any concern for parental rights in this area of data collection?
Sure. I know that's certainly an important aspect, and we can roll that into a request of taking a look at if there's, you know, state laws that actually have, you know, parental opt-outs or what that looks like for parental rights, because that is an important consideration.
Or opt-ins.
Yeah, or opt-ins, yeah. Either, yeah, either side on that.
Very good. Any other questions? Cassandra?
Well, thank you for coming all the way out to Michigan and this current weather that we have. Although, if you stay a couple days, I understand it's going to be balmy, so. I, too, have used your services, and I thought they were just fantastic, completely invaluable. I was hoping maybe you could talk a little bit about how ECS is funded? And I don't know if this is a question for you, or maybe, Eileen, it's a question for you, but what is, what is the role of the commissioners in the ECS?
Sure. Also, I'll take the first one. So we're funded, about half of our revenue comes from state dues, that states pay dues to ECS for services. And we, again, serve all policymakers in the state, from the legislature to governor's offices, departments of ed, higher ed, and state school board members. The other half of the money comes from grants that we get from organizations to support our policy work. So a large portion, I say, of our budget comes from state dues to do the work that you guys request us to do, to answer requests for information, to testify, to present on the issues that matter most to you. Our commissioners are unique to ECS, is that we're actually in statute, when we were created back in the mid-'60s by former Governor Terry Stanford and the Carnegie Foundation. And it was really the thought of, wouldn't it be great if there was a compact of education leaders in all 50 states who could come together and learn from one another? So there's this spirit of wanting to be, that education is a state right, and that there's organizations in a compact to support states in this important work. So in statute, we have usually seven commissioners in each state, and in statute, it looks a little different, and all the states are in each state, but it's usually the governor, who's always a commissioner, a member of the House, a member of the Senate, and the rest, governor appointees. And they really serve as sort of our leadership board, and having conversations with them really inform the work that we're doing, of talking to Tyler, talking to Eileen, talking to Superintendent Wiston, of what's important in your state and what should we be focusing on? And really seeing our commissioners as providing kind of this two-way communication and guidance for us. And we also ask them to kind of share the resources that we put out with others in their state, so that members of the State Board and other folks in the departments and the legislature are aware of ECS resources and that we're here to serve you.
I have a question.
Yes, Michelle.
Thank you. Well, I look forward to looking at your reports, and, you know, we're working on this dashboard and alternate accountability measures, particularly those that don't involve high-stakes testing. But I was just curious, what's your relationship with, well, a couple of things, how are the commissioners selected, who selects them? And also, what is your relationship with, like, the teachers' unions or other entities in the education community?
Sure. So it's really prescribed in statute, who's a commissioner? And so, again, it's usually, it's always the governor, and usually one or two members of the legislature, and then the rest are appointed by the governor through the Appointments Board. Our relationship with other groups is that they follow what we do. I think it's helpful for them to see the work that's coming out of states and kind of how we're focusing on issues and what we're focusing on. They come to our meetings a lot of the times to be able to hear from policymakers, from all of you, of what you're talking about. But we don't have, I would say that they're informed by our work, but we don't work with them closely, because we just really work in this nonpartisan, unbiased space of really wanting to provide that kind of information to all of you. And as Eileen's saying, being kind of an honest broker of information. So we follow what they're doing, but I would say they don't inform our work like all of you do as policymakers, because we serve you.
Yeah, because I was looking across the states. They had different people in different states.
Sure.
Like, some had kids count, some had state legislators. So it was curious to me, that it seemed like a mix, but, so they're appointed by?
Appointed by the governor.
Governor, okay. Thank you.
I had a follow-up question or two along that line. So is there, so there is appointees from the state, and, but there's no separate state organization or subsidy or anything like that? Okay. So how many employees do you have?
So we have 50 staff in Denver.
50 staff in Denver?
50 researchers and policy staff and communication staff, who kind of help us translate the policy and push out reports and other communications, so it's accessible to all of you.
Okay. Can I, I have one more question.
Yes.
So I've always wondered what states would compare to Michigan in terms, because we have my home city, Detroit, and Flint, and some cities with very high concentrations of poverty, which, to me, unlike Massachusetts and some of these other states that we model ourselves after, Tennessee or Florida, whatever. So what are the, are there, what would you say are the comparison states that have these cities with high concentrations of poverty? And, I mean, I would like to see if there's any, what successful models they're using, but with particular focus on that demographic, which seems to be a real, a real central problem to, you know, aggregate test scores and things like that.
Sure. So I think, you know, there's states with large populations, like, you know, and full-time legislatures, too, like Michigan. So looking at Illinois, and I know Massachusetts is always, and it's a good example for you guys, but also states that border view of, like, Wisconsin, and thinking about, there's a number of cities that do have high concentrations of poverty, too, that I think that we can look at. So happy to do some of that analysis for you of what does it look like? And those school districts particularly, I think, is kind of what you're getting at around poverty, and what are some ways in which they are trying to improve their education within those constraints?
Right, right.
All right. We have reached the time allotted. If there are no other pressing questions, well, thank you so much for sharing and enlightening us on the, on the opportunities for important information through your work.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation on the partnership district model. This is our monthly update on the partnership model. The next steps, continued work with partnership districts to provide technical assistance. And I understand Dr. Vanessa Kiesler and Dr. Paula Daniels will be presenting here.
Thanks.
We are excited to be here for our monthly update, as we continue to work with our partnership districts. And as you all know, this is really Superintendent Wiston's vision for how we can support districts and low-performing districts and schools, but even more broadly, not just about performance, how we understand what it takes to help districts be successful if they're not being successful in all the ways they want to. So it's one of his flagship things that he's launched, things is not the right word, programs, interventions.
Initiatives.
Initiatives, that's what it is. Flagship initiatives. And we're really excited about the work that's happening with our first round, and then the round that we're onboarding now. So I'm going to let Paula take you through that work.
Good morning, everyone. This is not the correct one, but I think, as I'm looking, you may have the correct one in your hand. So we'll just kind of walk through that.
Oh, you have.
We have. We're going to not look at this.
Yes. What we're going to be, what we're going to be talking about today will be some of the staffing concerns and issues and things that we're trying to do in support of our partnership districts. New district initial meeting time, we're going to talk about where we are in the process with our new districts, and then with those who've been with us since last spring, we're going to kind of give you an update on that. Some of the supports, and, you know, much of our conversation has surrounded the issues and the needs that the districts, you know, have around staffing. You know, none of this is new. We shared earlier that this, these have come up as we've visited the different districts in addition to the networking sessions that we've had. And we started to kind of break it down into some areas that we can start to try to tackle it. And one of the things was, there were some immediate needs, you know, districts, I need a sub in this class tomorrow. And then, I need a sub for, an immediate need is a little longer-range kind of a thing. But then some of those permanent needs, you know, that we, you know, are trying to work toward. And some of the things that kind of arose out of, let's say, an immediate need, you know, districts shared that they would call and get a sub, but before the sub could get there, they got a call from another district that perhaps paid more. So they would go to that district instead. So some of those kinds of issues. And we've been talking to some of them who've been trying some things. So, you know, we're trying to have some conversations that help inform what we do to try to provide some supports. So some districts have even talked about trying to form some consortia or work through the county, you know, to do some things. But that's a real issue. When you think you've got a sub, and then everybody gets to school and they're not there, and what has happened? That person has gone to another district. In the intermediate needs, we're looking at those needs for long-range, excuse me. The sub doesn't show, and different things happen. I've been a building principal and I've been a superintendent, so what, I've had to go in classrooms myself. Sometimes, you know, you split up a class, and, you know, you take this many and you take this many. Sometimes you can try to get another sub. They might not be there when the day starts, but you just have to, you know, do whatever it is that you can. Sometimes you pull the librarian. You know, sometimes you cancel gym class and you take the gym teacher. So there are different ways, but, you know, they're not necessarily conducive to a good learning program across the board, but it's still a reality.
And I think the educator workforce space that we're focusing on, we're focusing on helping the partnership districts with whatever they need, but this is one that really shows very specifically the intersection between these districts that have not seen the performance we've wanted to see on assessments, as you've all pointed out. But then when you dig in, when you partner up with them and you look at what they're facing, so all their staffing challenges, sub challenges, all these challenges kind of layering on top of each other, it's not as simple as saying, well, why don't you do more math instruction? Well, we would love to do more math instruction, but we need to hire a math teacher, we need to keep a math teacher, we need a sub, we need to, these districts are really dealing with very deep-seated and multi-layered challenges. And what they've spoken about with their workforce, it is, I think of it as like, the whole state struggles with subs sometimes. We have a general, you know, subs are a thing that any district would say, yes, we have to solve a sub problem sometimes. It intensifies in the partnership districts, and there's other factors happening as well. So many of these districts have spoken about, for example, their salary schedule, not just for subs and for teachers, is often the lowest in the county. So in terms of attracting talent to come to a district and then work in a very high-stake, stressful environment, they are really, they're asking us, and they're asking all of us, to, how can we help with this problem? This isn't something that's easily solved, and we won't see the kind of outcomes, academic, social-emotional, whole-child for children, if we can't get qualified educators to the kids. So, again, we are working on, in the partnership districts, you see challenges that are played out in education overall, but then they're particularly acute in the partnership districts and layered with other things that aren't as easily solved, which is what makes the partnership model really compelling, because we have a chance to dig in and try to attack things in many ways.
I'm just thinking aloud, but it would, the other side of the substitute problem, of course, is teacher absenteeism for whatever cause. And it might be helpful to identify, is this a common factor among our partnership districts?
Yep.
And maybe there's some common solutions.
So I'm glad you raised that. Actually, many of the districts, most of the districts, are looking at their teacher absenteeism data, and many of them have a specific goal around lowering absenteeism as well. But even if you have only basic absenteeism for, you know, flu and kids and, not to mention some of the additional stressors that teachers face sometimes in meeting, you know, it's a challenging work environment. But you're absolutely right, most of the districts have looked at their teacher absenteeism. Some of them have a teacher absenteeism above, you know, expected, some don't, but the ones that do usually have a goal around it and are working on remediating that as well. Okay, thank you for the quick fix.
Yes. And one of the things in talking about absenteeism, one of the things I know we've also been working on, not only just with partnership districts, but with many of the districts, is when we talk about training opportunities, trying to minimize the attendance of those that would take teachers out of the classroom too much for training. So looking at, and one of the things that, you know, we're having the conversations around, is what that training might look like, to ensure that they still get the quality training that's needed, but not necessarily in such a way that it exacerbates the problem of the attendance. So, now, and here we are at staff training. One of the issues that these districts have talked to us about as they discuss teacher turnover is with training. You know, you will have trained your staff, and then all of a sudden, they leave. So you have that information void with the new people coming in, and you have to start over again. So what that ends up meaning is, not only do you have to get those teachers up to speed, but it might be a financial issue, depending on what the costs are for the training. So those are some things that, you know, we're starting to really try to explore. One of the options that a district has proposed is to look at long-term subs in a building, where they have a sub who will be, become a part of their staff, and they're still in the exploratory stage of it, but who will be there, who will... the exploratory stage of it, but who will be there, who will attend meetings with the staff, who'll get to know the climate and culture of the building, who'll get to know the staff and will be able to get the training alongside the regular teaching staff so that when a teacher is out for whatever the reason, they'll be more able to kind of move in to that slot without it being a major disruption. So, you know, we're working to hear how those things are going on because if it works and it can become a model that other districts might use, you know, we want to make sure that we share that.
And I want to highlight what Paula just said about as we work with the districts, we are individualizing solutions, but we're also thinking about them as an improvement community. How can we see solutions that work in one district and make them, you know, extrapolate them to other districts? How can we try new interventions with five districts or 10 districts? So we want to attack the problem from multiple ways and really work with the districts, not only with the material we have, but how can we use them as a place to innovate, to share ideas and to be a community of improvement, not just 16 individual districts working on their own plans.
Right. And as I, yeah, as I shared, we're looking, we're working with them on different ways to deliver that training. Off-site is, you know, one that we're very familiar with, but sometimes there are onsite opportunities. And so when we can bring the training to them, sometimes right there in the classroom, you know, modeling kinds of things depending upon, you know, what the training is. Online training, this is the day of the online. So looking at trainings that will allow teachers to kind of get their training 24/7, as much as I'm opposed to people not getting their sleep at night, but still some, if you're up, you know, and you want to do it. And then setting up the format so that once you've done that online training, you have an opportunity to come back together and talk about, you know, what was learned, be it something that was individualized, you know, for a teacher or collectively as a school team. Then specialize in customized opportunities. Often those who are providing training services will work with a district to try to see how they can customize it to meet their specific need, which goes at what we are attempting to accomplish, you know, with our partnership districts. One of the things that the department has done back in October, we had an opportunity and it was, it was, it was supported by and sponsored by the OPS. We had a special information session. And what we had were partnership districts, we had representatives from colleges and universities, the regional education laboratories Midwest, they were one of the sponsors of it. And what we had was a full day where they came and they talked about special opportunities to help build, to fill that long-range need. What can we do to recruit? How can we home-grow, you know, teachers who will come back? And it was a really great conversation. One of the major takeaways that they, you know, kept expressing to the MDE team that was there was we really would like to have this conversation more, not just the partnership districts, but the other partners, those from the colleges and universities. We'd like to get this facilitated because we see this as a real possibility to provide a solution that will be long-range and not just that, you know, short-term Band-Aid type activity. So we were really pleased with that and we're looking at what we can do in addition. Going forward, you know, as I've shared about our networking sessions, we've had this on the agenda based upon the need. Our next meeting that is going to be coming up, the full session is going to be devoted to the staffing, but it's also becoming just a standing agenda item for those meetings. So we're working with the district teams to make sure that we are addressing this and providing the type of support that will really give them what they need to help turn these things around.
And going back to what Paula said on one of the earlier slides, we want to make sure, we have a whole range, our Office of Educator Workforce has a whole range of things to help people with staffing. So a variety of permits around subs and different types of teachers, alternate certifications, just help with who can place where and how to, connecting with educator prep institutions. So that's those short-term things we already do, making sure you're taking advantage of every flexibility, everything, you have that hands-on support. We're also raising up through these sessions the longer-range solutions. And we'll be coming to you with some of those at some point when we say, you know, the common thing that these districts need is this, this, and this. And those things are going to take more than just the department working with them. We're going to need kind of a collective involvement in, but we're still working on what those are and making sure we have the right ask before we come forward, the right solution to the right problem. But it is, it's that layered approach of what can we fix in the short term and then how can we work collectively on longer-term things that these districts need.
You know, and one of the things, you know, that we're finding is there are things that are available that districts didn't realize were available. So what we're also starting to work on for our end is how we can more effectively make sure that districts know what some of their options are. And what has happened at these, some of these networking meetings, some of that information has been coming forth because it's been a, oh, I didn't know we had that. Or it was a, I wish we could and we said, you can, and this is how. So hearing that from them is also helping us know, we want to really refine and make sure that everybody is aware of what we have available. We are also, we've also been able to provide some, what I call boots-on-the-ground support. A couple of weeks ago, we had a team from our Office of Educator Workforce go down and I call it make a house call to Battle Creek because some things had arisen as they had been, you know, Battle Creek is one of the new districts joining us. And in some of our initial conversations with them, they had some very key questions and concerns. So, you know, Vanessa put the charge out for us to deploy and take a team down and it was very successful and they got, we got a lot of information, you know, from them and to help, again, inform some of the things that we're going to be doing. And recognizing that we can't make a house call to everybody, but what are some of those things that we can do? And how can we ensure that we're able to give the most effective and efficient support to the districts as they need it, you know, in a timely fashion?
And it is one of the most exciting things about the partnership model, in my opinion, is, and this goes to our larger approach to triaging. Like Paula said, we have 900 districts and not every district needs a 10-person team from the MDE to come in to talk staffing with them. But our partnership districts do. And so with only 16 of them, we can actually say, and we've done this on multiple times and actually for me it's kind of fun because you don't get to do this very often, but say, hey, Battle Creek, go. And everybody goes. We are working on reshaping the department so that's more easy for staff to accomplish. But it is really great to be able to say, we know these districts, that we're in partnership with them. And that was something that came up in every district meeting that we've had, the, you know, when we go and we, Paula has some slides about initial meetings, when we go and have the meetings, we sit at the table with them as a partner. We don't stand up front and say, this is how this is, this is what you need, fill out these paperworks and, you know, hire two, whatever. We say, we sit at a table, we try to problem solve. And then we try to be good on our end of the bargain and say, well, we'll come down and we'll help or we will send you resources. We're going out to another district on some grant issues right now. It is, it is unique. In my time at the department, this is a very unique intervention, a very unique approach. And it comes from triaging and saying, yeah, not everybody gets the same things. It's like the multi-tiered system of support model that we're working on for students, that not every student needs the exact same level of support and we have to recognize that and be responsive. Not every district needs the same level of support, so we're being responsive to that.
You can see I've been watching basketball because.
There's a lot of basketball.
But one of the things that I know we've had is a full court press, you know, on trying to make happen whatever we need to. And our coach, who's been over here telling us, okay, team, this is who I want out there now. But one of the places that you see this happening is during the partnership district support team meetings. And those, that's the group that has representatives from all of the offices in the department. And at our last meeting, the conversation that everybody was having was around, you know, staffing pieces and supports for districts. And the Office of Educator Workforce, you know, took the lead in that meeting. But sometimes we don't even know what questions to ask on how to help. So that is a time when different offices can say, well, this might be the kind of thing that we need to ask and this is the information we need to have so that we can try to help deploy additional supports. And then making sure that we continue to double back around and get the direct feedback from the districts to see what it is that they want. So we're really kind of excited about this. You know, we're getting, we're really picking up steam and refining our process on, you know, how we can really get out there and provide the supports that we need. So we'll keep you updated on how things are coming with that.
Yes. So this is sort of a global question. And thank you for doing this work. I see the excitement on both of your faces and I also can see the exhaustion. And it's very special and I'm very appreciative. On the 21st Century Education Commission, one of the things that came out was the need for a clearinghouse and a consulting service outside the department based upon the concern by a lot of the participants that the regulatory requirements that the department lives with, funding for state and federal funding where you have to go in and say to districts, I'm sorry, that's wrong, could come into conflict with the support role that you folks are doing very well right now. And they described a gotcha mentality, which is that you would come in to help and then suddenly discover they were out of compliance and then there'd be all this, you know, brouhaha because they have to come into compliance. And it seems to me like you're finding the velvet glove, or the velvet glove and iron hand compromise and because I, clearly you will lead people into compliance. I mean, that's the way it's got to be. At the same time that you're providing them with new information on how to function and find new support.
Yeah.
The question I've got is how comfortable would that be over the long haul and are there other states who are doing both successfully?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And we have run into that already a few times. And the approach we've taken is if we're out there to provide support and we run into something where there is, things aren't going the way they should be, we continue in the support role. We provide technical assistance, we bring out the right people, we talk through it, we ask questions, you know, we help solve, we don't, and in general, the department, yes, we do issue findings and audits and things, we do that. What you don't see is that's rare, that is all, I don't think that's ever our first thing out of the gate. There has, we always try to remediate the problem, even outside of partnership districts. With partnership districts, we really are, liaisons are not there to ensure compliance. They're not there to audit, they're not there, the partnership district team is not. You're right, it is a balance because we can't also let a district we're in partnership with be misusing funds or not in compliance with any, or even beyond, I don't like the word compliance, people think of it as something pedantic and bad. Some compliance is actually really important, things like safety and health and appropriate placement of kids and teachers. So we don't want anything to be happening that's negative, we need to fix the problem, but we approach it from a support role. As far as other states, you know, we are one of the, we are, I would say we're a leader in this approach to the kind of details of this approach to helping low-performing schools. We're not the only ones doing district-level intervention or triaging, but probably our level of approach and the liaison role and the tailoredness and the, I think that's pretty unique. I think other states though are kind of doing what we do, that the office that's helping, that's providing support is not necessarily the same office that's tasked with auditing or monitoring or whatnot. But you're absolutely right that the SCA always lives in a dual role. As we've shifted away from compliance to technical assistance over the last five, six, seven, eight years, you know, I started at the department eight years ago, I think we're much less compliance-focused than when I came here. It's still, we still are tasked with compliance and we are still the ones that have to make sure it's okay at the end of the day. So I appreciate the question and I think it's a good question for us to ask when we're with other states about how do you balance that and is there anything else we could do?
And some of the things that we've been attempting to do, I know with ESSA, there, you know, a lot more flexibility, you know, was included so that some of those things that were more rigid before, that became a compliance-type issue, they're not quite the same. And I know the Office of Field Services has been working to not play the I gotcha card, you know, to try to really be there to support, but also working with the partnership, the Office of Partnership Districts. And an example to help kind of go through that path, you know, when schools have an onsite review, if they have findings, they have a year to, you know, go through and fix things. Well, we had a district who was going to be up for a review coming up in the near future, but they're one of our partnership districts. So what the two offices did, they, the OFS took a look at their partnership agreement and they said, based upon what they've got here, we will say that they are now compliant. So now they don't have to have that follow-up visit.
They're getting it with the work.
They're getting it with what they're already doing. So, you know, we're trying to work together to ensure that we're helping them, because when you think compliance, you often think of it as being punitive, but when you look at those things, they're really, they try to be based on what's good for the program. So, you know, it's how you go after it. But one of the things that as a part of all of the offices trying to really come together, but especially I know Field Services has been trying to see how they can support the work of the partnership districts and remove some of those additional barriers. But where they see something has been taken care of in something that they did, you know, as per the partnership agreement, then that takes care of the rest of it.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
And Michelle, just if I could.
Nikki before me, but then me.
Oh, okay.
For Michelle's question earlier of ECS, you know, how can you work effectively with low-performing districts in a different way?
High poverty, yeah.
High poverty and low performing. This seems to me to be something that he's, and I know that they left, but it's probably something that we should make sure that they're aware of, especially as we move through it and see what the experiment yields.
Absolutely.
And we, just to, just to put a plug in, it's not in the PowerPoint, but we are partnering with our research partners at Michigan State University and University of Michigan, but this particular slice of the research partnership work to evaluate, to partner up, to study what's working, what's not, both broad scale. And then also specifically, if a district is doing a staffing intervention that's new, we want to know if it works or if it doesn't. Because if it works, then let's do it in other places. And if it doesn't work, then let's stop doing it because it's not effective. So there is a research evaluation component of this, but it would be great to connect ECS and our research partners together because we want to, evaluation research to me is always twofold and I'm a little bit of a nerd about it. You want to know if what you're doing is working, that's the most important thing, but you also want to inform the larger body of knowledge about this very challenging question about how do you help low-performing districts with high poverty and a number of risk factors? If it were easy, somebody would have solved it already. So we can contribute to this national conversation about how do we do this very challenging work better than we've done it in the past? So that's where our research partners really come in. Sorry, Michelle, you have a question?
Nikki has a question first.
I just, I just wanted to say, I'm really excited with you, especially that analogy you use of full court press. It tells me that you're working hard and makes sense to me. But the staffing issue being central to the equation of how do you provide quality education is so key. And I've said this before, I think in a different way, but being a nurse first, staffing is central to providing quality care, right? And I've worked for organizations that are sort of like almost overstaffed surprisingly. I've worked for organizations that are very understaffed, finding the balance is probably key, but seeing how it impacts the quality of care is probably very, it translates to quality of education. So if what we're going through is to, going for is to increase that, then staffing is an absolute crucial element. So I appreciate that. And then on the back, I know you guys didn't get to this slide, just talking about mutual respect and mutual agreement. Anytime you have a conversation like this, that those two components are necessary. So just so that they're said out loud. Thank you.
Michelle, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah. So again, I'm really pleased. I think this makes a lot of sense to this whole approach and really appreciate the work and the commitment to making it, to really putting it, bringing it to life and and. it to life and, and using it to improve the situation for students. Mike, I had a couple of questions. And it kind of is around, who is the team? And are other voices heard? So one of the questions I have, and I think this would be really useful, is if there were exit interviews as to why teachers actually leave. And that might give some, because if the team is a little bit insulated, it, you might not get a full depth of the problem. I also wonder, and I know you said you don't do audits, but if there are spending, things with regard to spending that are, are not investing in education resources, but let's say a football stadium, is that something that would come up for discussion in these partnership districts? So those, that's kind of, so I, I'm just, I just want to make sure that this team, and I know a small team can, you can move more quickly, but it also sometimes being, having different points of view and criticism is, is really healthy. So I'm just wondering how much of that dynamic is there and how you ensure that it's there? And if you will do, if you do exit interviews or consider, and for administrators as well as teachers?
So going back to the mutual respect and mutual trust or that piece, you know, we , we, the districts are in the driver's seat on this. So when the department comes in, we don't have very many requirements about what they have to do. We have, it's like setting big vision. You have to create a partnership agreement, you have to have partners at the table, I'll talk about that in a minute, and you have to improve outcomes. But how you do it, that has to be locally determined, that has to be negotiated with partners, that has to fit, that has to be owned by the district doing the work. So in terms of all the perspectives, we have a number of perspectives on our team, but I'd say our team is less important than the perspectives the districts bring to the table. And they are bringing really diverse, wide-ranging. I've been continually impressed by how many partners these districts pull together, new conversations they're having, how they're bringing the board and the union and the administration and teachers. There have been teachers at every initial meeting, as well as their ISD and partners from the community. So talking about what does it take to, to improve the district? In that vein, most of the districts have identified they need system-wide improvements, that there's something about their district, how it's functioning, that needs to improve. And we have several ways to help them. One is our blueprint for improvement. That's a systems approach to improving your outcomes as a district and a school. Then there's some other system, we can do other system work. If districts don't want to install the blueprint, there's other supports. So that's where we get at, yes, starting to talk about money and spending and how are you doing your budgets? And how can we help you? And what, how can we bring resources from the department, from other offices, our grants office, our finance office, to talk through our field services? You know, are you spending all your funds in the smartest way to get to where you need to go? Or are you not? Now, again, it's not, it's not an audit in the sense that we're not going to tell them they can or can't do it, but we are going to facilitate the conversation and ask them, this team won't tell them they can't do it. Now, if they buy a football stadium with Title I funds, that's not allowed. So you can't do that. You will be told no on some end.
Flexibility doesn't go that far.
Or maybe some other supplemental funds.
Yes, I don't know that anybody's actually trying to do that. But someone will tell you no if you're way outside the purposes of the grant. But the partnership team works more on that bigger question of, is this, if we have limited resources, is this going to get the biggest bang for our buck? So, and then most of the, we don't do exit interviews, we, the department. But I would say, we've asked the question of most of the districts, why are teachers leaving? Why are administrators leaving? And a lot of them do their own exit interviews, or they just know. I mean, they know, not just because they assume. They've talked to them as they leave. If they don't have a formal exit interview process, they said, well, they left for the neighboring district and it was this reason, or they left to do this. Most of them have done formal exit interviews, own, have been able to say, three left for maternity, two got a different job, one didn't like the work, you know? They do cite that, that this is difficult work and that there's just some burnout, people leave for that.
So it, I'm just wondering if the issue was the top administration.
Yeah.
Top administration's not going to tell you that. You know what I mean? So how do you, so about?
That's true. Although I have found these districts to be really candid with us. I mean, I guess you don't know if someone's not being candid, but the candor of the answers that we've gotten when we've asked questions like, what do you think's happening here? What do you think's going right and wrong? I think they're very committed to, they know they can't improve if we don't have an honest discussion around what's happening. But I take your point about, as we dig into this, maybe a bigger thing, or maybe something with our research partners, would be to do some independent evaluation.
Get away from, no.
And I think the board has raised that before about surveying the districts, surveying parents. So that is on our radar of something to do. We're very focused right now on the district voice about, and driving the efforts. But I think that independent look is a really good thing to continue to.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are a little over time, so we'll, we'll keep moving if, if that's okay with Dr. Z.
Oh, I thought we were, we were finished.
We just, do you want me to run through the last two slides and then take the question? We just wanted to update you. We are, we are, this month, we need to sign new partnership agreements with our seven new districts. So we've done all the initial meetings, and they are working right now through their final plans. We actually, excitingly, have, Battle Creek will sign Thursday. They're our first one out of the gate. Battle Creek, as you know, probably know, has a substantial investment from Kellogg. So they had spent the last year doing a, a great deal of strategic planning, have a really exciting plan in place. And our, what they are excited about with the partnership model is it really puts the state as, at the table as a partner, with Kellogg, with the district, with their community partners. They're doing some really innovative things. So they were excited to be the first. So I wanted to give them a little public shout-out. We're having a big signing party on Thursday. And then, we've talked about that. We've been doing nine-month check-ins as well with our first crop. So right now, we've got people coming in at different times. So we've done nine-month check-ins with some of these, some are scheduled. We were in Benton Harbor before the holidays. And, you know, it's early days, but there were positive signs in their data, and that is really exciting for a community that has not seen a lot of positive data movement for a while. So there's still a lot of work to be done, you know, it's, but at least there was positive movement. So I was really pleased when I looked at their data and thought, okay, we can see where we need to keep moving. But I'm glad these numbers look different than they did nine month ago, nine months ago, even though we know we're not where we need to get yet. And all the rest of them are scheduling the nine-month check-ins and moving forward.
And just one statement on this, this, this slide was, has been on all of them now. But because we think it's so important that we keep this before us, we'll always make sure that this is here because this is where we're anchored.
Here, I'll leave that up. Thank you. Dr. Z?
Are there any further questions? Pam?
So I, I think, great presentation, and I know that you all are doing great work. I've been hearing great things from, from some of the districts. One, some of the things that have been brought up is the elementary or the feeder schools. So there's some concerns that, okay, we're doing this great work here, but eventually we know we're going to have to address where these students are coming from. So that was one of the things that was brought up.
And we, if I can just say on that, we, we actually really encourage districts, even though certain schools have to be in their agreement, we encourage them to make it a whole district plan and to serve other schools. And we're doing some adjustments to some funding streams and things to make that easier for services to be provided district-wide or not only in the school that was named. It's that transition between that older accountability model, which is very school-focused, to a district-wide improvement model. But yes, we're, we agree. Don't try to think that the problem in your high school, if that's what it is, is isolated from.
Everything else.
Everything else.
And then the other question was the 21H funding. So just some concerns or questions on when that becomes available.
Yep. So we have applications in from two of the districts, and it sounds like three more are close. And we are working through them with Superintendent Weston to get some of that funding out the door.
Okay. So what's the, is there, is there like?
There's not a hard date when it has to go. We're doing it in a rolling way. As soon as possible, we would like to. But kind of back to Michelle's question, the liaisons worked really closely with the districts to make sure they knew what their plan was and then where this, this money is meant to be last dollar spent. So they had to go through a fairly exhaustive, we've spent all of our other funds and this is a fund, this is a need that's in our agreement that we couldn't do. So that process, I would say, took some time. And for the district to not only work with us, but to work amongst themselves and their stakeholders. So like I said, we've got two we should be able to move forward on relatively soon, and three more coming in.
Correct.
Okay. And then around the teacher concerns and to Michelle's point about making sure that teachers are able to give feedback, because I do hear from teachers who are afraid, for lack of a better word, to express all the concerns that they have. But one of the big ones that I continue to hear is over-testing in districts and that coming from the district, thinking that they're doing something to appease, you know, testing to prepare for testing. And so still having that, that mindset and that mentality. So hopefully that's something that's being addressed out there. And I don't know if you're hearing it, but I hear it a lot. But I don't know if it bubbles up to the dis, or to the district level when you're getting it from, from the district.
We do, I mean, every agreement we've looked at, you know, we do look at it for, like, duplication in assessment. You don't need to be giving two benchmark assessments, you need to. So we've had that conversation with a couple of districts, particularly a couple of public school academy districts. There's sometimes multiple types of tests required. Again, though, in the mutual respect, mutual agreement, it's, we don't tell them, you have to stop this. We say, you need to consider whether or not these assessments are adding, you know, there's a, there's a trade-off here. And this one and this one are doing the same thing.
And maybe making it clear what is required.
Right.
And what's not required.
Right.
Because some teachers are being told that we have to do this. So.
Right. And we aren't, just to be clear here, MDE does not require any assessment other than them step.
Right.
And they need to be doing a benchmark assessment in K2, K3, based on the various laws around early literacy. But what that is, is not, we don't require that. Even that's a law requirement, not per se us. But, but yes, we, we try to be clear with them about what they have to do, what they, so another point that we've had with the partnership districts is, some of them will come in with 17 M-step goals, you know, one for every subject area and every grade. And we've said, you don't have to have all these. You don't have to, you have to have a proficiency goal, at least one, but you should be using other measures of, of progress and performance. And that is a, a big surprise to most of the districts and a big relief when we say that.
Very good. Other questions? Tom?
Dr. Daniels and Dr. Kiesler, I cannot stress how glad I am that we are given this time, please. I mean, I've said that this is one of the reasons we need this, and there are people in this state in high positions who feel that, that the relationship, that the threat of closure should be on these schools. And I was thankful the governor moved the Office of School Reform Office over, back over the state board into the MDE. And so, but I, but I'm glad we're putting this, and I quite frankly, we're putting it at the end, not because it's the least important, I think it's one of the most important, and we give it an extra hour, I'd say two hours, we need it to, to continue. I do hope that there's a culture change, hopefully. I think when we visited some of those schools that were being threatened by closure earlier last year, you know, I mean, they were losing teachers in neighboring schools, not just for money purposes, which was a big deal, but also just the threat. You know, maybe the school that's going to get closed. You know, the other alternatives and apps, or, you know, whatever. I mean, I really hope that teachers are feeling, and there's a culture that's saying, no, you know, we are, we are improving, that's the focus. So. I'm hoping that that's going to be helpful with teacher retention. And I do want to say, I, that, you know, I hope that when you're doing this, looking at maybe different ways, and maybe this is where teachers come in.
As well as.
Different ways of doing things, right? You know, if we have to give a lighter touch to some kind of standards and say, I don't want to lower the bar, but I want, if there's a better way to engage students. I keep thinking of Dr. Zhao when he was here and said, maybe, and I think.
It was tongue-in-cheek, but maybe we.
The measure we should have is how quickly are kids coming into school versus how quickly are they leaving? Are they, are they engaged? Are they excited to come to school? And I don't, I think you can do that. I'm looking forward to imaginative ways in some of these partnerships to say, you know, these are impediments right now. And maybe if you guys address some of these. I don't want to see blame shifting and all that, but, you know, an open conversation says, you know, these things, you know, we have to, we've met with some teachers that were, you know, kindergarten teachers that were just, they had to, they had to do 80 observations on every child twice a year. They said, we don't have time to teach, you know, I mean, we don't have time to instruct these kids. So, you know, maybe there are things that we can do. I think there's a lot of unintended consequences, maybe third-grade reading, if some of them are saying, look, we certainly want kids to read. But maybe there's things that are unintended consequences, that they can say, this is, we really think about, this is a root cause. And we will just willy-nilly do something based on that one testimony, but we can certainly look at these things. I really think there's a way to really open up, you know, the box and think outside the box. It's really, I think that could be where we, with this lighter touch. And really get teachers and, you know, let them know that we want. We want to focus, and maybe, maybe things aren't being done the right way right now. We're open to looking to change.
Very good. All right. We are running, thank you so much for your presentation, sharing your important work with us today. All right. Next item on the committee as a whole is presentation on the SEAL of Bili literacy. This presentation will focus on the components of the SEAL of Bili literacy program, ways the districts can choose to implement the program, the plans to communicate the program to districts, and ideas for future work. The presenters are Linda Forward and Dr. Luanne Shelton. Welcome.
Thank you. We're delighted to be here. This is a work that's been in progress for several months under the guidance of Dr. Shelton. And we're really happy with the results. She's brought together a group of stakeholders to put together this, this proposal and the policy. This is important to Michigan. We've got 27 other states that are doing this today. And in fact, there is legislation proposed by the House to, to make this something that is more codified. However, we're excited because this will position Michigan beautifully for demonstrating that there's an interest in a second language skill and that the children that are leaving our schools who have this SEAL of Bili literacy can bring another set of skills to the workforce. I think it's important to note that in some cases, the second language will be English as opposed to Spanish or some language learned in a classroom here. So it'll also benefit those kids who come to us daily from other countries with a, a skill set already in place that we frequently don't recognize. I'll ask Dr. Shelton to go through the, the proposal with you and help you understand what we're trying to do.
So you should have in front of you the PowerPoint, and you should have the policy itself. And then there's a one-pager. So the one-pager you can look at later. But as I go through the PowerPoint, I will also reference what page number it is if you want to look in the policy. So to begin, I would just, everybody introduce themselves in the beginning, and I would just like the people to stand that worked on the committee so you can kind of get a visual of who's here.
Thank you. A very dynamic team, and it's been a lot of fun. One gentleman, and it's not here that I do have to mention, came down from the UP for every meeting, drove, spent the night, yeah. And he actually represented the tribal languages. And so it was, it was a wonderful group, and it is a wonderful group. We're calling this work our Phase One because we do want to explore further and keep our group together to update, et cetera, et cetera. So before we begin, I do want to say that participating in the Michigan SEAL of Bili literacy is completely voluntary. This is something that we're just doing at the state level to recognize any district that wants to have their students recognized by the state. There are some districts that are doing the SEAL of Bili literacy and have been doing it for several years. So there's districts out there that have been doing this type of thing on their own or some sort of recognition for Bili literacy. And if you're not familiar with the term, because it is, it's a more fairly new term, Bili literacy, literally, we don't say bilingual, we say Bili literacy because it does refer to the ability to read, write, speak, listen, to all of those as they are relevant to the language. And I say relevant because, of course, when you think of like Latin, we're going to, that And I say relevant because of course, when you think of like Latin, we're going to, that Bili literacy is going to be more in the written and, and reading domain. So, there we go. As Linda said, there are twenty seven states, but actually that number changes constantly. So the more updated is, there's thirty states now with a seal, eleven that are in early stages, including us, and one state that it's called under construction, and about eight states that there's no reported information on. But in the backup, you'll see in the back, there's an appendage with websites. It's sealabyliteracynoperiods.org, you can always go to that, and it has a map and it shows who's doing what. So it's sealabyliteracy.org. One of the things that we did to start this project was to research the topic, to see what other states were doing, and to see what the research said, and how to support our policy. Each of, each of the members were assigned a cluster of states to see what their own SEAL of Bili literacy looked like. So we did, like we do in many times in education, we really just looked at other states and talked about what they had in place and what would really fit the Michigan model and what standard we would use to choose what Bili literacy, the level of Bili literacy is. Also, we made sure that this document is aligned with the top ten and ten. And, and as a matter of fact, the SEAL of Bili literacy is one of the superintendent's main goals in the strategic plan. Right there, okay. And this is on page five of the document, like I said, you can watch up here and follow along however you want to do. So when we developed this document, we really wanted to come from four perspectives. One being career readiness, one being articulation between pre, pre K higher, pre K twelve and higher ed, another looking at Michigan's global competitiveness, and the value, the final one, looking at our linguistic capital, as we call, cultural and linguistic capital. So students that come to us with other languages, helping them and encouraging them to maintain those languages, and students that don't come to us with another language and are learning a language, so helping them and encouraging them to, to get that language. In, in talking about this, I always talk about myself, I studied Spanish, French, and Portuguese. And I literally started in eighth grade because we had a experimental program that went to the high school for the half a day. And I look at what we've determined here, would I have been able to get that SEAL of Bili literacy? I'm not sure, I mean, because it's a high standard, but if I would have known it existed and worked toward it, I think I could have. And we'll, we'll talk about what the standard is to, to qualify for it. So the document also talks about the pathways to Bili literacy. And so we wanted to make it very clear that there are multiple ways of learning a language and maintaining a language. It was really important that we did recognize that, one, you can learn that language through academic coursework in the school, in a bilingual program, in even a high school program, because you have some kids that have a knack for language and four years is all they need. They take that AP exam, they take another exam, et cetera. But we also have a lot of kids that come to us with native languages, heritage languages, that mother tongue that we talk about, which is kind of a older term, and they're learning English as well, and or both. And so this is just an opportunity for us to recognize that, give it a standard, can you meet that standard and be recognized for being multilingual? So this is page nine and ten of your criteria, and I am going fast, you guys, because I know that we are a tiny bit off and we've got that big launch coming behind us, and a cake out there, I think. So the criteria for, for granting the seal, this was the most interesting and the most dynamic piece to do, and the group was just great. I mean, we really did hash through a lot, is really determining, okay, who's eligible for this? So after reviewing the states that have been doing this work and looking at the, the ACFL, which of course I'm going to have to like remember, American Association, somebody help me?
College teachers.
Of teaching foreign language, thank you very much. We determined that we wanted Michigan's standard to be intermediate high. And if you turn to page twenty three through twenty five in the back, you can see in the, what we call can do statements, kind of those proficiency benchmarks of intermediate high. So this is what a child or a student, a student or a learner should be able to do in both language, these types of nuances, okay? We talked about in this section, what are acceptable assessments? And to be perfectly honest, there are lots of commercial assessments out there, but there are also not a lot of assessments for particular languages. So we also talk about how are other ways that we can demonstrate that proficiency or give credit for that proficiency? We talk about districts, we give districts recommendations on forming committees to do a portfolio assessment, particularly when you can't find that language in a, a commercial exam. We talk about looking at what's already existing, AP exams that are out there, looking at transcripts, because that's something we already do with our second language learners and giving them credit for having so many years on their transcripts of whatever coursework, I believe up through sixth grade. So this section really dealt with identifying what's there, identifying what could be used as an alternative, and then identifying how you would pull together like a portfolio when there's absolutely nothing out there. And that was very relevant, for the most part, to our gentleman that came down from the UP with the Native American languages and how they might. But no matter what, it is still, no matter what you use, it is still using that intermediate high proficiency benchmark to compare against. Page eleven and twelve. So this is under construction, just so you know. And it was one of the pieces of this whole policy that we made it a little bit more vague because we are working hard at the district, I'm sorry, at the department here to work with our JIMs, MARs system, a system that's already in place. And we are also talking to the other depart, the other offices, particularly working with digital badging, because we would just like for everything to connect, we don't want to do something in isolation. We really want to connect to other initiatives that are going on. So we want to make this as simple as possible for districts to go on, log in, make some kind of indication of, yes, we're, we're going to have some kids that we think are going to graduate with this. And it'll be a simple application of uploading whatever the exam is they use, what the proficiency level they hit, and an automatic, an automated response hopefully coming from us, maybe a letter or certificate saying congratulations, and then maybe the digital badge being sent, et cetera. So if you turn to the next one, oh, actually, it's a little bit off, but that's okay. Let's just skip, let's go to page sixteen of the document. This is the award that we designed to come up for it, and then this one. And then we give them samples of some of the stuff that we are working on here at the department of how you might innovate and put the badge on a transcript or diploma. We're also going to have available that they can get a foil, like a, a physical foil stamp to give out and whatever. We also encourage them in this section to do other things like, you know, maybe honors cords of some sort or, or whatever. So we just give them some ideas, so we can go back to the one before. So back to outreach, this section, again, we talk about what MDE is going to do to help roll this out. And it's going to be the typical one, beginning with you guys, presenting to you a press release. We are working on a webpage that we want to keep updated, where they can click on and even see what other states are doing, et cetera. And hopefully, in the future, near future, maybe some regional TAs in the state, so we can pull people together and say, and this is what Michigan is offering to support you and your efforts. And the last section, that's the design, and it should be a presentation. Again, this section only is a recommendation, there's, there's nothing that we are doing, we're just saying to districts that, you know, look for the venues to recognize these students. Consider tagging it on to when you're doing an award over here, and when you're doing communications, do communications like you do everything else, you know, put it in a newsletter, put it on the marquee, et cetera. So that was very, very quick with like two minutes for questions, not really. But we're, at least we got, we got this presented to you. So you do have the, the complete policy in front of you for right now. And like I said, I, I, I don't think we're calling this too much a draft anymore, except for the section on the application piece, because we do have to get all those pieces hashed out. But do understand that this is Phase One, we're going to see how it goes. And Phase Two, the reason we decided that, because some other states do a, a gold seal, a silver seal, and we're just like, okay, let's just go with a simple seal for right now. But it's kind of valid, some of the things that they do, because we do have dual immersion and immersion schools here in Michigan. And some of them give something at the end of fifth grade or the end of middle school because of some of the accomplishments. It would not be the seal itself, but it is a recognition as a step to the steal. So that's what we're going to be thinking about in that Phase Two and Phase Three of, of the process.
Dr. Sarley?
Questions?
Yes, Tom?
So you said this is voluntary for districts, is that the impact is to always?
Yes.
Because I think some states are saying that, you know, this is what you have to achieve, you know, to get. Okay, I mean, I, I can. I'm better with this, it's voluntary, I guess I just don't understand, I mean, if somebody wants to take four years of French, they tell, tell the employer, I took four years of French, and I guess the employer said. Well, we need to give you a test to make sure that you know it well enough for that.
And we would.
And that would be what I would expect, you know, I mean, if they, if, if some nonprofit wants to develop a test and say, this is, you know, we're doing proficiency, and you have a potential employer can say, I, you know, take this, take this. I can understand that, I just think it's a little bit nervous that states are going to start telling. You know, defining what is proficiency in this particular area. By the way, I have my, my wife's niece is up from Brazil, and I, that's always a big concern for me.
That's very cool.
So I, I love Bili, I mean, it's a great thing, and I, I love, but I also, I'm always concerned about the state trying to dictate.
So this, because it is voluntary, we're not trying to dictate, we are just setting a standard for us to give a seal. That's it. And we would hope that, and like I said, we, we've followed along with many other states, and, you know, some states actually have it lower, and maybe one or two may even have it higher, which, you know, we really struggled with because it's very difficult, you know, as a high school senior, maybe to, to get some of those levels. Ultimately, I mean, ultimately, it is up to the employer, it is up to, you know, them to decide if the seal is, meets the level that they want met. Yes?
Yes, Nikki?
I'm just curious, just because we, I've heard from, from the department many times that we're kind of like going down this road of pathways, if you will. I just want to make sure that it's available to anybody who would want a Bili literacy seal, because.
Any student.
Like it wouldn't, like the classes wouldn't be too full because only people who are in IB programs can take, whatever. I just am curious about that.
A standard classroom setting in a high school, four years, if the student has the knack, as, as Luanne said, they could then pass that. A four-year high school study would not necessarily put them in a good place for passing the criteria that are there, nor should it. But it's available to any child who's done the work and can pass the test.
Okay.
Beat the criteria.
And in many cases, you're going to have kids that don't have high school.
Right.
Credit to reflect this. I mean, we have language centers all over the place that, you know, they maintain that language, they do things on the weekends, they do things after school, you know, so it's just all about demonstrating a certain level of proficiency to get our seal.
So technically, your school could, your school could say, hey, no, sorry, you can't do it. But then you go elsewhere and still get the seal, because you were somehow, like, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it, it should be, you know, that, that's a good question.
The seal comes through the school.
The seal comes through the school. Actually, it comes through the school, but it's interesting, because I don't know if we ever approached that, if the school said, or the district said, no, we don't want to do this, then if the kid wanted to still get the seal, there probably needs to be a discussion with our group of, how might that happen? So could a parent come and log in and?
I think it's a valuable, valuable thought process.
And I can't believe at all the meetings that we actually never even addressed that one time, so that's a very good piece to, thank you.
Eileen, or you next?
I don't know, I raised my hand though.
Yes.
Good. I apologize for my call. One of the things that I'm noting on this, which is a good thing, I think, on page twenty three, when you talk about the intermediate high proficiency benchmark, you say that children can show their proficiencies in spoken, written, or sign language.
Yep.
And that's really interesting, because my son, who's dysgraphic, took French initially from a woman who was dyslexic. So the barrier to learning a second language, except in a form in which you're facile, can be profound if we demand something that a learning disability can't accept or can't fulfill support. At the same time, the, both of them are fluent in conversational French. So I want to make sure that that's the case, that there should be a mix. Obviously, you should either be able, I mean, you should, you have to be able to show the proficiency, but you can do it in any way that indicates that.
Yep.
That's, that's wonderful.
Any other questions?
Hi. Well, I, I, in full disclosure, I'm the daughter of a foreign language teacher, so, and his first language was French. So I, I like the idea of things that encourage learning of other languages. And I know in other countries that I've traveled to, the people have, they're required to take like seven years of English in another language, and they can just move around the globe so much easier than I could. But I was, I think learning languages is a, is a, is a good thing, and, and doing anything to encourage it. And I would disagree, I think mandating it is a, is a, is a good idea. I think we should all learn different languages, even if it's sign language, or I don't know if sign language is included, but other, communicate with other people we wouldn't, yet an opportunity to. The, the only question I had was, I, you know, I, I always wonder, if you're going to have an online test, how do you make sure that it's not somebody else taking the test and getting a seal that might not be appropriate?
So just so you understand, we are about awarding the seal, we are the back end of this entire process. It is the integrity of the district to ensure if they're registering a student that, however the testing happened or where they were tested, that's on them, we don't look at that at all. The only thing that we ask is that you upload the score, so we have something, an assurance that the district said that they took the test and they got this.
Kind of like a diploma.
How it is given, none of that is a part of the state, and we would not want it to be a part of the state.
And you wouldn't have any recommendations, like the test should be supervised or something like that, or?
I mean, again, because there's, there's many, many ways that they can be tested. I mean, they can go to a testing center, it doesn't even have to be at the, the school itself, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions here? Deeply appreciate your presentation, I, it's a, a great policy that encourages a diversity of learning among our students without laying a burden on all of our districts, so I deeply appreciate your work here, thank you. All right, running about eight or nine minutes late, but the next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation on the launch of Parent Dashboard for School Transparency. Do we need any time for setup or anything like this?
No, we're good.
Okay. For the past several months, we've been receiving updates on the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency. The dashboard is a combined effort of the Michigan Department of Education and the Center for Educational Performance and Information, abbreviated as CEPI, based on significant parent feedback on its planning and design. Today, the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency is being launched, and staff will preview the site with us. We have Dr. Vanessa Kiesler and Mr. Ted Phillips as presenters, thank you.
Thank you. So today is a very exciting day, we are launching our Parent Dashboard for School Transparency today. So it's been a lot of work, it's, it's a very exciting initiative, we have the team in, so I'll take some time to do some general introductions in a minute. But we are, we are thrilled to be sitting here and having met our deadline, gotten to January and have Phase One ready to go. We know a lot of you have seen it already in the preview time, but we do want to do some public debut and just talk a little bit about what brought us today, and, and then we have, we do have dashboard cake, so that will be great during lunch to celebrate all of this work. So this conversation began back with our ESA work in 2015, really, and lots of conversations with the board. And as you all know, you, the board, State Board of Education, wrote the policy, approved the policy related to this dashboard in June of 2017, so we have done all of this development work from June of seventeen until now, which is really an amazing amount of work, and I, I will talk about some of that today, because it is, it is something we want to celebrate and a very big accomplishment for the department, the board, the team. We have this easy to use Parent Dashboard, it has this one easy location where parents and caregivers can get building level data. It does provide this more of what the board asked for, was a more balanced picture of school quality. It has information beyond test scores, more information coming in the future, and it shows the performance of every public school in Michigan, and that includes our public school academies. There are, Ted Phillips is our dashboard designer, and he's done a fabulous job. We've been so excited to have him on board for this process. He's going to take you through a live, live run through, which is always a little, when I said, I want to do a live run through, everybody on the team was like, oh, good, great, great idea Vanessa, this, we should really do that, but we're doing it. But just a couple of features, you can quickly find a school, you can compare performance over three years to peer schools. The school search feature that Ted's going to show you is amazing, and a huge improvement over previous search features we've had. Being able to compare the school, this was something we talked about a lot, too, how are you doing relative to state average, but also relative peer schools, other schools like you, both geographically and demographically. There is a really well-developed FAQ, Alessandra was saying that one of you raised a question during our preview, and we were able to put it in the FAQ right away so that we can be responsive to having more information that will help people navigate. There is a huge swath of awesome information that is for sharing, for printing, for promoting this work. And we can learn more about overall state of Michigan performance on, there's a. And we can learn more about overall state of Michigan performance on, there's a state level view. Just to kind of remind everyone, this was designed with an intense amount of parent and educator input. So our educator work groups and surveys were thousands of hours and people thoughts. We did specific dashboard surveys, had 42 responses, 4200 responses, excuse me, 4200 responses. Our parent advisory group, that again is a unique thing we did with this launch, where we pulled together a set of parents in an advisory way to have ongoing implementation support. And then we did specific parent focus groups and we're going to be rolling out the online user survey soon. I won't go through this in great detail, but I, the main takeaway from this is that it is a short timeline. So we are excited to be sitting here with a functioning, awesome dashboard today. And I knew my team could do it. I knew the team could do it. I did. I think they had their doubts sometimes, but I said, we've done harder things. They didn't remember what, but we did. It is a collaborative effort. We could not have done this without amazing partnership, the department's work. And then CEPI has just been our absolute side-by-side partner in all of this, using a lot of the work that Ted has done, that we've done, to inform their development of, their redesign of the overall MySchool data, but just being absolutely supportive. Special thanks to Tom Howell. I don't know if he made it over here today, but the executive director for the Center for Educational Performance and Information, he's been an amazing collaborator and partner in helping us get this done. DTMB with all of their support, Center for Shared Solutions, helping us with the mapping, Red Cedar Solutions Group, that's the vendor that CEPI uses for the dashboard. So I, they've been logging tons of hours, especially over the holidays, to get us to completion. And then our partnership with Public Policy Associates, who did our stakeholder feedback, our focus groups, our, a lot of our development, helped us with development of the different supporting documentation. So it really does take a village to build a dashboard. And it takes. I wanted a couple data points. So you all were aware, 33 staff collaborating from all these agencies, numerous contracted application developers. The team estimated more than 3,000 person hours plus more developing the application. I bet that's higher, honestly. I bet we're up over that. And that's in the last six months. And keeping in mind that it's not everybody's full-time job to develop dashboards. So really, people can, I had somebody tell me just the other day, oh, you know, state workers, they always leave at four and they punch out. Yes, this person was being very nice to me. Anyway, and I said, you know, the people I work with are not that way. They're mission-driven, they're committed, and they are, they all put in the time and the team really has. Integration of data sets from 10 databases. We have all of our schools in here and data covering over 1.9 million Michigan students. Here's, I'll say a couple, I'm going to take a minute and say some special thank yous. I mentioned Ted, we've appreciated his vision for the dashboard and his dedication to getting it to where it needs to be and all of his design expertise. That's been very useful and helpful to us. Chris Janzer is here somewhere. Chris Janzer was our technical point on this, so this is his baby at some level and again has provided great vision leadership for this project and has been instrumental in its success. Alessandra Shrewsbury, and I had to cross out Henry because I still want to say her name, Alessandra Henry. Alessandra Shrewsbury took the leadership with, working with Public Policy Associates, working with our stakeholder support, all the support materials in our communications plan. And it's an amazing plan. And I told this story yesterday in leadership team, but I opened up the newsletter from my kids' middle school and there was the blurb about the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency, the blurb that we sent out to schools and said, maybe put this in your communication materials. And I was so excited that that had happened, that it had worked, and hoping that other parents who didn't already know about this in some great detail like I do, will go to it and use it. And I hope other schools were doing that same thing as well. I mentioned Tom and his partnership. And then I want to just, I'm not going to name probably everybody off, I don't know who's here, but can the MDE team stand up? If you're listed on the MDE slide and you're here, can you stand up and just wave at the board? Okay? And then can the CEPI team stand up? If you're here? Can I see Jerry and Visundra? I think you guys were the two main project managers on this. So they're the ones tasked with running around and telling everybody, we're behind, you need to get done. And it's very popular when they arrive at your doorstep because they're usually there to ask you where your deliverable is or when you're going to get it. So a lot of the team, but they've been great and strong project management helps get this across the finish line. DTMB, I don't see anybody specifically there. Red Cedar, is anybody here from Red Cedar? And Center for Shared Solution. Oh, good, thank you. Hi. I didn't see you guys sneak in. Thank you again. You could probably tell some stories of what the last few weeks have been like. I'm sure it's exciting to have your team work round the clock over the holiday. And then moving on to the next slide, Public Policy Associates. Can our Public Policy Associates partners please stand up? And we have, we have greatly appreciated their work. We could not have had all of the, we don't have the expertise in-house to do focus groups, to do outreach to some of the parents, to some of the groups we've gotten to, to help us craft some of the documentation. So having Public Policy Associates partnership and then want to take a minute as well and thank again, hopefully they're watching, the WK Kellogg Foundation and the Steelcase Foundation, their, their support of a grant to us made this all, all of the work with PPA possible. And we just had an opportunity to meet with them the other day and just reiterate how impactful that investment has been and how much we truly, truly appreciate it. And so want to continue to recognize their support. And then these are our parent advisory group members. I don't think anybody's here, but possibly from this? No? Okay, well, thank you to them. Again, this is the group that met regularly to help virtually and in person to help advise us on ongoing development. So let's give the staff a big round of applause, please. And I just want to say on a personal level, you know, my, this team, all of the staff at the department continue to amaze me. This technical team has really climbed some big mountains in the last few years and I have yet to find a mountain to put in front of them that they refuse to climb. So I'm very appreciative of their ongoing commitment to getting our data and our information out there in a useful way for parents and for teachers and students and stakeholders in Michigan. So thank you, team. Okay, what is shown, I'm not going to belabor this slide because Ted's going to show you everything awesome. You can see all these things. The information come from data that we collect and store as well as CEPI. And then this note, next month, we'll talk some about what the stakeholder groups have been doing. While we've been building, we've also been doing stakeholder groups around Phase Two. So we have some, we'll have recommendations to bring back to you on that. And how do we want families to use this dashboard? So we do want there to be richer conversations about schools. What's going on at school? What do I care about knowing more about? What decisions might we want to make? How might we want to get involved? And how's our school doing relative other schools, either nearby or other schools like us who might not be nearby? Just a couple highlights there. This has been unique for us to use this iterative approach to strategy and design and to have the user testing. So we know what worked and what didn't in a more real-time way than we have in previous designs. Most of what you're going to see was validated by parents. Ted can talk more about this, but it is mobile-friendly. The technical term is responsive. That is new and it's ADA compliant. That's not new, but not easy. That is not a nothing thing to make sure we have. And then it does have the brief video message from Superintendent Wiston. With that, I'll let Ted take over and show us the dashboard.
Thank you. Well, thanks Vanessa for all your leadership and confidence in us. It was a tight deadline and we appreciate, you know, you pushing and keeping us on track and as I mentioned, your confidence. Thanks. Well, I just wanted to first say that I'm very proud to have been a part of this project and excited to show you. You've all heard about a lot, a lot about it and you've seen screens, so I'm sure you're excited to just jump right in. Just give me a second here. I'm going to jump out of this program. Okay. All right. So what we're seeing here is the dashboard itself. You can see at the top, the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency. This is in, this is within the MySchool Data website and you'll see that there's a navigation specific to the transparency dashboard. I'm going to go ahead and just walk through the navigation here real quickly. It's fairly simple. As Vanessa had mentioned, there is a lot going on here and, you know, you can see the number of hours we put in. There's just a lot of data and there's a lot of information, but we think we've simplified it, so it's very easy to use and that's why it looks kind of simple. So here is the dashboard homepage you're seeing right now. There's a state overview. There's also a Find a School, which is a page that you can get to from anywhere, which is one of the most primary tasks that a person would have. You can also contact different groups and there's also a Help section, which is really helpful for understanding the content that's in the site. Okay, and the website, as she mentioned, is designed for anybody to use on mobile as well as ADA compliant. I'm going to go ahead and show you what the website would look like in a phone. So as she mentioned, it's responsive. You know, we can start here. You see the desktop view of it and you can resize the browser just to kind of get an idea of the fact that regardless of the width of your device, you can see this website and understand and, you know, perfectly use the website. You saw the navigation for desktop here. There's also a separate, different navigation. It follows the same exact architecture, but, but it is more mobile-friendly for tapping. So you can click here and you see the same navigation. I've already actually selected a school, but we'll go through that in a second and you can see all the secondary information. So I'm going to go back to desktop, just a little easier to present on that here. On the left-hand side, you can see what this website is about. It's one of the most, you know, topmost things to always do on pretty much any website. Make sure it's very clear so people understand what the website is and how to use it. There's a video from Superintendent Wiston that explains the video and the initiative here. Below that, there's actually a survey that folks can take. We're looking forward to feedback there, that, you know, that we'll be collecting and taking a look at that information soon. Below that are some how-to videos and then some additional content at the bottom. Parents did see this and they did go through this copy and they really thought it was very concise and helpful. All right. So on the right-hand side, sorry, what we want to do is go ahead and search for a school. So there's a search and the best thing about the search is that it can work wonderfully for people who know exactly the school they want to go to, as well as people who don't really quite know, but they want to explore an area. So I'm going to go ahead and type in Ann Arbor as an example. We all know Ann Arbor. And you can also take a look at schools all the way up in the UP or anywhere in the state, as you know. So the first example I'm going to show you is clicking on the city of Ann Arbor and you can view all of the schools and all of the districts that are in the city of Ann Arbor. And I'm scrolling all the way down through high schools. So you can see every grade span, middle high school, middle school, elementaries, et cetera. I'm going to go ahead and click on Pioneer High School as an example. And here we can see the overview for Pioneer High School. Now I'm going to take a quick click back just so I can show you some of the other features of search because they're quite useful. So now we know, you know, maybe a person comes in and they say, well, I just want to go right to Pioneer. I know exactly the school my child goes to and I would love to just see more information on that. And you can see there's actually more than one Pioneer. In this case, I want to take a look at the one in Ann Arbor. Click there. Again, takes me to the overview page for Pioneer. And let's do that one more time. Okay. So in this example, you're a parent that's maybe coming from another state, you want to explore Michigan, maybe you just don't really know the state that well or you're from another area. So we created a map and worked with one of the groups here. And you can double-click on the map or you can also use, I'm having a little trouble here with this tracking thing. Okay. You can double-click on it to view into the map. You can also use the plus and minus, just like Google Maps. So I'm going to go ahead and double-click into Ann Arbor and you can start to see some of the schools in Ann Arbor and zoom in and out. I'm going to go ahead and try to find Pioneer. Oh, this is here on. So that's nice, I can see different schools. And I'm going to go ahead and click on Pioneer, click that little bubble and again, takes me to the same page. So there's multiple ways to get to the same page and here we are now finally to, I think, the information you guys are excited to see. So at the top of the page here, you can see the general information about Pioneer High School. Parents found the website, a link to the website for the school, really useful. They also found, you know, the other information useful. And also there is a map on the right-hand side. I could click that and it would take me to Google Maps, which we all know, of course, and we can take a look at the surrounding area in a different view with Google. So there's eight key performance indicators on the page at an overview level. I'm going to go ahead and scroll through those. You can see performance, progress, graduation rate, advanced coursework, post-secondary enrollment, on-track attendance, English learner progress and assessment participation. Each of these graphs, as Vanessa had mentioned, shows three different school years as well as three different sources of data. In this, in this case, it's Pioneer, of course, high school. There's an average of similar schools by demographic and third, there's the state of Michigan average. So it shows trends. It's not just a static snapshot of information. Parents love that, that approach to it. They also really like the graphs that we created here and I'll show you another example of that. So they love the bar graphs and the rounded corners we saw was something that responded really well to, and I could go into lots of details on why this was designed, but it was validated in a lot of different ways. You can also click on the line charts. Some people, especially folks that we talked to, they love the line charts as well. They're a different type of view. What, oh, I missed one thing. So on the line charts, one of the things about this that I can show you an example of ADA compliance is these are in green, purple, and orange, but if you are colorblind or have other disabilities, this website can still be read. You can see that there's a different pattern. This has sort of a dot, dot pattern. This is a little bit longer hyphen and this one is sort of an odd pattern, two dots and a long bar. So those correspond down here and so if you cannot see the colors, you're fine. And I believe men, or there's about 8% of men that are actually colorblind.
Can you show how to gray out the one you don't want to look at?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I like that.
Yeah, so you can also turn one off if you'd like to. I'm going to try to find, there's examples in here, there we go, where things are really close to each other. So maybe I want to turn off this one and just see the average or vice versa. Nice little feature. See what else. Okay. So next, another thing that parents loved was the ability to filter on student groups. So even though these are at an overview level, we can still do that and filter down. There was a lot of questions about students with disabilities as well as other groups as well, but this one was, you know, we discussed quite a bit. So I'm going to go ahead and show you that there are six tiles on students with disabilities. Oh, actually eight, sorry. And you can view all those. And there's all these different student groups that you're probably aware of, but if not, feel free to take a look at it when you go through the website that is currently live. Another thing that we did.
That school right there is very good.
Oh, great.
I'm actually on the site right now. It's live now.
It is, yeah.
I pulled up my school and, but to be able to filter that with all the different student groups.
Yeah, it's nice.
With the data.
It's nice to take all of this data that wasn't transparent and be able to feature it. And it's been exciting. One of the other things that we did when we talked to parents was, you know, obviously they had questions about certain things. And so what we did was we strategically placed these little help icons throughout the website to answer anticipated questions. So these are contextually aware icons. And in this case, I'm going to go ahead and just click on this. I want to learn a little bit more about performance summary and I can go through here. Whoop. I'm sorry. I'm used to a mouse. This is a little touchy. Okay. So performance summary, you can take a look at this. For the most part, most parents felt that this information was enough to learn about it, but some did want to dig deeper. So at the bottom right of this little window is View More. That will take them to the FAQ page and they can learn more about that subject as well as others. And I'll show you that page in a few minutes.
And Ted mentioned this in passing, but I just want to reiterate, the headings, the text, we vetted it with parents.
we vetted it with parents, and that is the first time in my knowledge that we've done it, especially at this level, to say, you know, "We think proficiency makes a ton of sense to you. Maybe it doesn't." And so we hope this language is more accessible to parents, because it's been designed with parents, not just with parents in mind, but with actual parents who aren't us. We're parents, but I would not say we represent your average parent out there, probably. Maybe. I haven't done a study, but this is all really tested, and I think that's a big advancement that can be easily kind of just forgotten about as we look through.
The parent dashboard for school transparency.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem. I see you're reviewing one of the new videos, which are very helpful. No, it's great. No, it's good that you are.
Are you going to look at an elementary or middle school too, or just the high school?
I was going to just stick with the high school, but I can take a look at a middle school or elementary.
I got questions already on what data we're presenting for elementary and middle, you know, which is not perfectly logical. It's a startup, but if you could do, just touch on it, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah.
Try to turn my sound off.
Oh, no worries, yeah. Those videos are really helpful, so. Up here on the left-hand side, again, you saw the navigation earlier, but this is the desktop navigation. You can see how easy it is to just drill down and take a look at different indicators. You can go through each one of these, progress, graduation, college, and career readiness. So there's a lot of information here, and that information is, well, actually, I'll show you in a few minutes here what that looks like. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and jump into performance summary. I'm curious about that information. So I go ahead and click Performance Summary.
Could you make it the bar graph?
Pardon?
Could you make it the bar graph?
Sure. I prefer the bar graph as well, but I think some analytical people like to see that trend and the vectors, so they're both really useful. Okay, so here's the bar graph. Now on the left-hand side, you can see again, the student groups. It's pretty much the same as the other that you just saw on the overview page. On the right-hand side are subject areas. So you've got English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies. And I'm going to go ahead and just select Economically Disadvantaged and English Language Arts. You can see the graph here is updated. Down below, sorry. There we go. You can also see again the average of similar schools. In this case, we can now filter and view it by student demographics, which is the default. We can also look at it by geography, the closest 30 schools.
And this is also, I'm going to point out things I think are coolest. This is cool, that you can choose your comparison, and this is hard to do. So this is awesome. Use it, and kudos to the team for figuring out how to make it happen. It was not easy.
Question about that. So if we've got, so if I'm just viewing it, and it says average of similar schools, how do I know what schools it automatically populates with? Like, if I clicked on the pink bar or whatever, is it going to tell me?
Who the schools are?
Yeah.
I don't think it'll tell you who the schools are right now.
Oh, okay.
No, it doesn't do that right now. There's been a lot of discussion about that, and it was something we wanted to make sure we considered and had a really good answer for, and so that'll probably be something we discuss and work through in the next phase.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it just finds the 30 nearest ones, but you can't go in and kind of, you could go back to the map and look around, I guess. So we will keep working on, like, dive-through searches, but right now, it just averages the 30 nearest.
Okay. It'd be good, I think, for parents to be able to see immediately what's around them and what they really have access to, right, in terms of making choices.
Yeah. It gets complex, but it also, it can probably be done, so. Okay. One other thing that I, is on almost every page, parents immediately asked for this right at the very beginning of when we first started testing them. They wanted a PDF that they could share from any page with the graph, email it, print it. They also wanted to be able to share the URL to the page, so you can just go here, copy and paste this Google link, and paste it into an email or whatever you may want to do there. Yeah, and you just click PDF, and it pops right up. Actually, I could just click this one, and you can see, oops, you can see that it shows the graph and the information you just saw.
Downloaded.
Oh, good. Let's see, where am I at? So the next page I'd like to take a look at is just one that we noticed parents were really curious about in the surveys, which is the ratio of students to instructional staff. Similar, it's a bar graph, but in this case, it's actually a ratio. So you can see in this case, it's 17 to 1. Average is 18 to 1, and the state average is 17 to 1. So next, these are the main pages. There's a lot of them. Feel free to go ahead and view those and dig through. I'm sure you're all curious. I'm going to go ahead and, let's just say that I have another question here. I mentioned a minute ago that you could click through and see more information on performance. I'm going to go ahead and just type in graduation. And you can see that it automatically updates quickly with the different information that has the keyword graduation in it. So I'm going to click on what is graduation rate, and very easy to use, explains exactly what graduation rate is. We did spend a lot of time on making this plain language, because obviously, some of these terms are very complex, especially if you don't come from an education background. And lastly, the Contact Us page has the different places and resources that you have. If you do have a question, again, there's a mention of the survey. We'll have that there for about a week. If I have technical issues, I can go and email SEPI. If I have questions specific to a school, I can go ahead, back to that overview page and go to their website. There's a phone number, there's email. I can also contact the Department of Education here if I have any questions about the content on the site. And then lastly, there is this communication tools. And I think that's everything. The one thing I'd like to just say and wrap up is that our goal here was to be the voice of the parents and empathize with parents and hopefully succeed in their ability to find information specific to a school, as well as also be able to learn about schools and areas that they do not know very well. That's it.
Did you want to show an elementary school?
Oh, thank you. Yep, I forgot.
The reason for it is, when you look at the page, there's no data on K-5 performance or middle school 5'8", the eighth-grade test.
Okay.
So there's no data at all on, it's on graduation rates. It's high school, so it's a composite district picture. But I would posit, while that's really important, as you go into it, I've got BACH, B-A-C-H, they pronounce it BACH, elementary school, but any of them will do it.
Okay, let me go there.
And I hate to pick on Ann Arbor. Why'd you do that, picking on Ann Arbor?
Ann Arbor has a nice diverse student body, so more of the things populate, and you can see more of the factors, so.
Right.
And they're big. They have many schools, so you can also look at different. So that's why, not because of any, you know, latent dislike of University of Michigan on my part. Just because I'm a Spartan fan, that's not why.
We've got the university people here too saying why. But on performance summary and progress summary, it makes total sense to me, but as you go down below, you don't, there's no data spot for 3 through 5 assessments for M-Step, for English Language Arts and Math, which would seem to me to be an important factor for me if I were trying to figure out a school.
So you're saying call it out from performance summary?
Yeah. Because what happens is that the support documentation for the default is graduation rates and advanced coursework, which, while it's important if you're looking at the whole district, if you're new to town and you're trying to choose an elementary school, would not be as compelling to me as the 3 through 5 M-Step data. And for middle school, you've got the eighth-grade M-Step. There's no place to get it here for these schools. In other words, if you, there are schools in Ann Arbor that don't have BACH or WINEZES performance level. And we don't give the actual, well, we do. We give the percentage proficient on the performance summary, but that's proficient. It's not any other gradation, so it's just that one piece of data, really, on an elementary or middle school. And the progress summary is based on the whole district, on all state tests or on the elementary school tests. Performance summary is--
Yep, I meant you lost me just a little bit, Eileen.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me try again. It's my cold, it's not you. But performance summary is for elementary school data, 3 through 5, or is it for the whole district?
This would be for BACH, that's how you--
For myself, okay.
--elementary school, the grades in that school, any assessments they took.
Okay, and that would also be true for the progress summary data. It's for the school itself.
For any state assessments they took.
For any state assessments they took. Okay, great. So then, what I'm looking at is whether or not graduation rate is as compelling as being able to know what the third, fourth, and fifth grade assessments are for ELA and Math to a parent who's transferring or looking for a child's particular--
Like literally what they are? Which ones are given, or--
No.
--a breakout by grade?
Yeah, scores, scores. Or third-grade literacy, which is a state measurement. We've been putting a lot of emphasis on literacy, and to have it reflected here makes sense to me, because we're stating that that's a priority.
Yeah, I mean, I think going back to what Ted said about parent design and ease of use. So we should also say that while the parent dashboard is, we would like to think of it as kind of the first stop to start looking at data. This sits on MySchoolData, which houses every cut of every performance by grade, by subject. So you could go, and we can probably help facilitate that. I don't know that we put it, remember, we had to have that conversation about how much goes in here versus is, remember months ago, we talked about on the backend or a click-through or go to another deeper report? So somewhat you're saying breakout by grade and breakout by, it's not that it's unimportant, it is important, but it's not currently housed here, and I think we'd want to talk about, do we house it here, or do we point them at that more detailed grade-level report that exists elsewhere in MySchoolData?
Well, I would make a powerful argument that it should be here, because for elementary schools, to say that the district graduation, I mean, and this is not a fault, it's a design issue. And we talked before about the fact that you've got a ton of reaction from some parents, but until this thing is up and running, people can't see what information they can get and what is not, it's not that it's concealed, it just isn't revealed there.
Yep.
And I think that if you're coming into town, or if you're looking at schools, to have to go someplace deeper than this to find out what that is, doesn't make a lot of sense. And maybe you just didn't have those parents thinking about that.
Right.
Well, that, and also it's phased. It's a phased approach. There are another 15 to 20 indicators coming up.
Yes.
And I believe there's some of that information in there, but, you know.
And so Ted did just pull up on the top dropdowns where you could get to more. This is the link over right to MySchoolData.
Correct, yeah.
So you could go for this school. The location will hold.
Correct, yeah. Actually, you have to keep going in.
Oh, boy, still more?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, boy.
Yeah, so this is, this was just redesigned as well at the same time, so we've been working pretty hard.
Can you go into one of those, just so we can see how my legs are down?
That's what I was attempting to do.
Sure, yeah. So from here, then you could drill down to the different areas.
So we would say, I mean, if you, this is now into MySchoolData. This is not the dashboard, but this is on the main site.
Yeah.
You could say third-grade content, ELA.
And we did make sure that the school you've already selected here, BACH, and inside Ann Arbor is automatically cooking, so it remembers that, and so all you have to do is select the year right below, yeah, as opposed to having to go through and select everything again.
But I would say this is the same discussion we had during the, my brain isn't functioning, during the focus groups, which is that the sample included almost half people who had community college or high school or college diplomas. And there was a big difference. It's a 35-point difference from what I remember between their priority, which the top two things were low-class size and after-school activities essentially, because it was much lower for librarians, school librarians, and visual performing arts. And there was a big gap, 30 points, between that and providing school, providing services for children and families. So we knew from that review setup that there were other things that might be asked by the other 50% of the parents we couldn't access, who don't have the capacity necessarily to spend time here getting down to that, but for whom it'd be viscerally important.
Yeah.
So I'm just hoping that we take a look at K-8 as perhaps being separate, informational fields, and then maybe, do you have more focus groups coming up? Were you, how, I know you were doing a tremendous amount of outreach--
Right.
--to that, to proof the website.
Yep. So we, and I think probably moving back to the PowerPoint and kind of talking about the future is maybe a good segue unless there are other questions on, because I think--
I do have.
--we'll cover that.
Yeah, I can wait till we end, though.
But I don't want to move past the demo of--
I think Tom had a question. First, I am so impressed and very excited about this, which I think is very subjective, very non-transparent, very, just has all-- This is informative. It's, there's no weighting, there's, you know, weighing, balance, I'm trying to say it. It's just, it's data, you know, I think we can improve. You can improve when you have an ADF and statute or an ANF, whatever. I mean, this is something that we can improve on, that is a tremendous, I mean, I think that is a tremendous value right there, just having a Phase 2 that we can just continue to improve. We've talked about maybe having a video if somebody really doesn't understand a lot of this stuff. I have a video of a mom saying, "This is what I used before," you know, or, I mean, and then there's nothing that says that nonprofits can't do that. You know, all kinds of things can come alongside this. We've talked about point surprise, right? So I mean, I think we're going to be adding, you know, and I think this is going to generate a lot of questions that are going to be good questions for administrators. Wait a minute, what? This data is showing this. Some of them may dispute the data, and that'll get us up to looking, I guess, but also just wait, I didn't quite understand. We haven't looked at it like that, or now parents are going to be coming to them saying, compared to this, or how come the trend is this? I just-- You know, I'm extremely impressed. I think that we've looked at other metrics that might be coming in the future, like time spent on arts programs and things, extracurricular. I mean, I just, I know that this is a tremendous starting point, and I think it is so much better, 100 times better than any kind of subjective ADF tagging schools. It's just, this is, this is the right way to do it, and I am so thankful to both of you and to your teams and everybody who's been involved. PAA? Yeah.
PAA.
Yeah, I mean, and all the other, the other groups that helped with this. So it's wonderful. Very good. Lupe, did you wish to?
Yes, I do. I truly am amazed at the product that you were able to develop. However, I still have a concern with many, many parents that will not be able to assess a computer first and much less understand any of these graphs and this information. Some people have indicated educators, I think it was, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Ted.
Ted said that the terminology, if you're an educator, you will be able to understand the terminology in some instances. And then Tom just said administrators are going to be delighted, and they were going to be able to use the information. See educators, administrators, but then I'm thinking of the people that don't speak the language, that have never been in school before, and, you know, we have many, many, many more of those parents than we have the administrators and the educators and everybody else. So I still have a concern. The product is, I could understand it, and we around the table and around the room will be able to, but I am very, very concerned about those other parents, that I am the spokesperson for those parents, and I'm concerned, how are they going to understand? How are they going to assess this information when they don't even have a computer? So I have a lot, a big concern, and I will continue having it, because these are the parents that I work with.
Nikki?
You guys aren't done yet, right?
Not quite.
So I guess I'll withhold until you're-- Actually, Tom hit a couple of these things already, so that was a nice segue. And Lupe, I think your concern, and I appreciate you continuing to ask us to think about the parents this won't reach, so how do we work with schools on outreach around this? You know, those PDFs, how can they be printed? How can we look at translations or access? I mean, there is a lot of work to do to really engage parents fully with this, so I appreciate you keeping it on our agenda. I don't know if we misspoke or what, but we were trying to say that we think that the work we've done, hopefully more than just educators can understand the wording, not just educators. I think previously, probably you had to be an educator to understand a lot of things that we put out, but now we hope this, parents who weren't educators looked at it. Now, I think your point is, is that all the parents who might need to access it? No. And I think Eileen was raising that point, too. So I think we just want to continue to understand that to really get this usable by all of
the populations we serve, we have to keep working together on that. I think that's a well noted point, so.
If I may just interject a thought here. It does seem to me that if you were to set it up to give a general reading on the factor, the single most, the factors that we would average together to get a grade, okay? Just photograph that page and issue it in a hard copy or make it available in a hard copy for people who can't, who don't have computers or even issue it as a book. And then you've got a functional equivalent without sacrificing the ability to explore other data, you know?
Thank you. Okay, I will kind of just quickly, I mean, going back to Eileen's questions from before about what else is coming. And to Ted's point about this is a phased approach. So this was phase one. This is really an enormous amount of work for phase one, but we're not done. And we have phase two coming right behind some of the main things. This points a pride collection. So some of the information that we don't collect currently in state data that we want schools to be able to tell us about things like their wraparound services, their extracurriculars. Moving over to the new data as available, the access to fine arts, that piece, we're working on that. But this is what we'll bring to you next month, is what might we collect or move toward for services for students with disabilities, services for English learners, climate and culture surveys, educator engagement. So we wanted to spend more time defining what were meaningful metrics before, we don't want to collect data just to collect data. We don't want to just, we want to know how it informs the conversation. So that's phase two. There is potentially a phase three or four or five. I think Eileen's point about how might we use the dashboard to raise up literacy? Or how might we use the dashboard to raise up some of the career technical focus that we're working on with the governor's office, with Ted? I think those are things that weren't in the initial policy document from the state board of ed, because it can't be everything, and we had to say what we're building. But once it's built, we can ask what else might it need to do? It is a living tool. This is phase one of multi-stage. We want the feedback from the public as they're using it. And I think, Eileen, you made the point, we knew that no matter how much feedback we got, you have to launch it and let everybody use it, and that's when you find the rest of the feedback to some level. And so we're committed to continuing to improve it. The question about focus groups, we would love to continue our partnership with Public Policy Associates. We have a very fulsome, ongoing stakeholder engagement plan. Allison has been a really big advocate for stakeholder engagement shouldn't be a one and done, and we've got all these people who've become invested, and so we'd like to keep going. We are going to need to find resources for that. So if anybody, you know, knows anybody who wants to support this work, we would, we'll be, well, we will be looking both internally and then hopefully to the foundation community or to others. Again, we need to invest in this because it's very important, but we also need to be aware of resources that are available. So that's where we're at right now, is trying to figure out how we continue to invest in this. And then, in addition, on the communication promotion plan, in addition to the work that OPCA will do today and previous days around official press releases and things under Marty's leadership, we have all of these promotional plans. So we were announcing, we've rolled it out, we have the social media outreach, we have the page, yeah, let me go, this is where, let me go here really quickly. In theory, quickly. What?
I'll just go down here to the-
You just tell me.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, sorry. I want the communication page. No, I want this.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in addition to- MD parent dashboard? This is why my team said, don't do real live, real-time demos. So we have this resource page. Again, this is what I was mentioning, Allison led a team, Jan Ellis, Linda Wasick, a number of our PPA partners to pull together all of these tools. So a one-page handout, dashboard fax, a flyer for posting, near computers or distributing to families, a badge that you can put on your webpage that'll link directly to the dashboard, which is very cool. And then these customizable templates. So messaging, again, this is, I'm sure, where my child's school picked up messaging for newsletters and used it. And then a basic PowerPoint presentation. So encourage the board to use it. We encourage anybody watching to use these things and make sure your schools know they're there because they'll, they'll be getting questions from parents about this thing. And so we created all of this to support that. And then we will continue with ongoing promotion, conferences, and look forward to everybody using the site. You know, it's one of those things that he's a, Paulo was using basketball earlier, I'll go to baseball, the Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. Hopefully, everybody will come and use this, and it will be fabulous. And we appreciate, last thanks that I need to give is to the board. We really appreciate your ongoing investment in the policy development, letting us come every month and tell you about user interface testing and things like that. We appreciate your leadership and guidance, and thank you for the partnership. And congratulations to everybody for a successful launch of the parent dashboard.
Thank you.
Yay.
Could I, I do apologize, I got my act.
So yeah, there's Public Policy Associates, I definitely appreciate that. And I mentioned one of their competitors, so I apologize.
All right, further questions here? Nikki, did you have a-
I just wanted to say thank you guys for all the work you've done. And I feel like, I feel like S's intent to, you know, hold schools accountable with those six, you know, measures that were really limited in terms of honoring teachers, parents, and students in the equation. I think we kind of tackled that with the dashboard. And I also feel like this overarching discussion of data, which Eileen kind of went into with Education Commission of the States this morning, I think that conversation needs to continue to develop, and this heads us in that direction because I guess, I guess my approach sometimes seems very negative about data. This wouldn't be available if there wasn't any data collected. Yet, the question still is, what data, well, questions, I should say. What data should we collect? How should we use it? Who really owns that data? So to me, accountability ties into the data conversation that needs to kind of grow, I think, in legislatures across the states in terms of how are we acknowledging those questions as really who is the rightful owner of that data and how is it ethically used? So this starts that question by saying, this is the parent dashboard for your children that you are going to school with. And then later on, it will be the individual that really should own their data. So, and there really is ethical use to it. It's not that it's not purposeful, it's not that it isn't something we shouldn't collect all together, but exactly what does that conversation look like? So I feel like this is definite leadership between the department and the board, taking it, we're taking leadership in that conversation, I feel like, so. Very good, thank you.
Good. Michelle?
And I've got a tickle in my throat, so forgive me. Yeah, I am, I am very proud to be a part of this, so. And I found that all the people I worked with, you know, to be enthusiastic about this and committed to getting this done, and I was on the special ed task force for the special ed, thank, well, bless you, Maryland. So I just had some, some, thank you, everyone, giving me stuff. So a couple of questions. It is, and I, maybe you've answered it already and I missed it, but so it will be translated into other languages, so Spanish-speaking, Arabic, that kind of stuff at some point?
We're working on that.
Okay, and the videos would be captioned or whatever? Are they captioned now and?
Does anyone know the answer to that?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
They're not kept in other languages, but I think that's part of consideration for future phases.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm getting at Lupe's point, but you know, I think it should be easy to understand, although I don't think we should underestimate the intelligence of the parents either. So I think, but I think with some explanations, most people could probably understand this. And I agree 100% that it is much better than an A through F, which is overly punitive to teachers and the staff and overly simplistic. So I think this is great. So I also, I thought I had seen, so I worked at the group with special education. And when we had our one-on-ones kind of to go over it, I thought I saw when Ted, when you were doing this, that you, there was a dropdown just for special ed information about a school. So if I went to Pioneer, I could just pull up, would it have to be by category or can I get like all the information about the special ed students at a school and?
It's the same information that you would see, it just filters it on students with disabilities.
So for all the, whatever, the five, six categories that are there?
Yeah, almost everything. There are some areas we just simply don't have that information or it's not, and that doesn't work.
Okay. Yeah, with each subject.
But otherwise, yes. Yeah, and you can actually have students with disabilities as well as English language arts, mathematics, social studies as well.
Would it also have like the attendance and the graduation and all that one page just for special education?
I'll have to take a look.
I was trying to play around with it and I couldn't get to it. I thought maybe there was a different way to get to that information.
On the overview page, there's those eight different tiles, and I believe-
Okay.
This is what you're talking about, Michelle?
Yeah, thank you.
So then you go to the overview and then-
So if you go there, then it shows every tile, this is just for students with disabilities.
Okay, that's great, yeah.
And if you moved around to other student indicators, it would hold, right? Or you could reset it?
It does, it does hold.
So then on the left-hand column, the one thing that I know that, there was some discussion about was the expulsion rates. So if we looked at expulsion rates by, but right now, we can't do it by subcategories, is that correct? Okay, so we can just look. In my group that we met with, and I don't know how to, how to get, you know, there was a, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, for some of these subgroups, in particular communities or county or districts, the groups may be really small within a school, but you could look at it more, in a more meaningful way at a district level, sort of go back and forth within a district. So right now, if I went to the district, if you, just like how you had in Ann Arbor, you could pull up-
Yep, so this is an interesting thing to remember.
Okay.
The parent dashboard for school transparency is a school-level dashboard.
Right.
There is no district roll-up of this information.
Right.
I think one of the conversations we need to have is, should there be a district version of this? Is it just a roll-up of all of this? Or is it special indicators that are related to district? Like system data, like presence of, going back to the partnership district discussion, presence of good HR functions for hiring staff. You know, the metrics might be different for a district, so that is a conversation. ESA didn't require anything district level, so we've been very focused on school level. We need to talk about what is the district reporting? Now, going back to, if you wanted to drift over into my school data, which you could in any of these, my school data has district level reporting on all of the metrics. So you can find district level data, but not in the parent dashboard.
Yeah, and I was saying, just the same categories that you have. So like, in a particular district, what is the expulsion rates of African-Americans as compared, you know, I guess you couldn't compare it to other districts, but some-
You actually, in my school data, you can. There's a head-to-head comparison you can do.
Okay.
Again, we could have the my school data team come back and show you that, too. So you kind of marry the parent dashboard. I think of it as like the entry point, the one-stop shop, but there, it sits on top of a very large store of amazing data and options.
So why wouldn't we do the expulsion rate by student group? That's something that's gotten a lot of attention, and we know that there's discrepancy across groups, so.
It's-
The numbers, I think.
Yeah, I, it's, it's probably not displaying, because as you saw, expulsions are such a small number anyway. When you cut also by student group, it's too small to put on a public website. It's data you can't publicly display because of privacy requirements. That gets into special education, the Office of Special Education does a whole series of work around disproportionate representation and significant disproportionality, which gets into discipline by different discipline issues or disproportionate discipline issues. But again, that's a different, so it's not in the parent, it's another place where it's not in the parent dashboard, but it's not that we don't work on it or report on it, it's just in a different place. But I think, I mean, even if we, again, I think the numbers will be too small for the public parent dashboard for the most part, at a school level.
But at the district level, you're saying that's why it's on my school data?
Right, so then the question we had in special ed, because the numbers, we had this issue around numbers and N-size, is, is there a way to just get the data for the district? Because it's, because otherwise you get nothing. You know, it's like, because the numbers can be so small. So is there some way to, for parents to get an idea of how the district is doing on these issues? So like with expulsion or suspensions or whatever?
I think for the public rollout, we should probably quickly address why there's data unavailable in some of these tiles, just to, you know, one minute.
That's actually in our introductory videos that just got loaded to the homepage after we did the preview review, but we did add a little bit of explanation.
Great, good for-
Right, so say it out loud here.
Or whatever, I mean, just to let them know.
Want to take that question?
Can you scroll down?
So there's a couple of reasons, well, Allison, would you like to answer this question? What did we say in the video?
What we're saying, the progress summary is because the growth of progress is demonstrated, it's measured using multiple years of data across time to show progress. Those three years that we would have here are, that we have data for are rolled up into the 2016, 2017 measure. And for 15, 16, and 14, 15, we don't have that information because we were measuring growth differently.
Different tests.
Right. In future years, we will have three years of information as additional years are added to the database. And then in other places, you're seeing things where there are, is not data for like graduation rate in an elementary school. You're not seeing that because elementary schools don't graduate students and things like that. We did try to explain some of that in our, in our videos that we have that you can click on.
Thank you for asking.
Cassandra?
I just wanted to thank you all, to thank the entire team for the effort that has gone into this. I know how something of this level and magnitude in such a short amount of time is phenomenal. So thank you for that. I wanted to echo Tom's remarks that this is a way more robust system of providing information to our citizens than an algorithm ever could be. And also to remind the folks around us that this truly was a bipartisan effort to rethink the way we look at school accountability, and that's really important to highlight as well. And I'm looking forward to phase two. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I, too, would just like to echo what Cassandra has just said, and this is really exciting. And then to Eileen and Lupe's points is, I really look forward to working with Allison and whomever else so that we can make sure that we're continuing to get, not only getting feedback, we're really promoting in some of those districts, especially like our partnership district communities that Lupe is speaking of in the disadvantaged neighborhoods, but making sure that they know that this is out there, but also are really knowing how to utilize this. So I really look forward to us continuing to do that. And I think we can probably do that even before we get continued funding or resources to do it. But I'm sure we will be more than willing to help with that.
So we do have the cake. I know you have some more business, I think, before you dismiss, but we will, every team, please stay, everybody, please stay for cake while the board finishes, and then we'll do that on the lunch break. So thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we adjourn for cake, the last item that we have is discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. Anyone have any questions for staff regarding these criteria? Seeing none. All right. We are, I think we can just roll the reception, the cake into our lunch break. I know I'm going to have another piece after lunch. But we are adjourning 25, almost 25 minutes late. When do we want to re-adjourn? Is 1:15? Will that allow enough time?
That's good.
Kirk Ward?
Twelve.
I only have one.